In the case of COVID-19, the city has returned to virtual public meetings as allowed by the Governor's Executive Order N-2920, which allows for a deviation of teleconference rules required by the Ralph M. Brown Act. City Council meetings will be held by teleconference only until further notice. Rather than attending in person, residents should call 805-865-7276 to provide public comment via phone. The phone line will open just prior to the start of the closed session meeting and again prior to the start of the regular meeting. Written public comments can be submitted via email to cityclerk@prcity.com prior to 12 noon on the day of the council meeting to be posted as an addendum to the agenda. If submitting written comments in advance of the meeting, please note the agenda item by number or name. City Council meetings will be livestreamed during the meeting and also available to play later on YouTube by accessing the following link: wwwprcity.com/youtube. And with that, we'll call the meeting to order, and I'll ask for a roll call, please.
Councilmember Garcia?
Here.
Councilmember Gregory?
Here.
Councilmember Hammond?
Here.
Councilmember Strong?
Here.
And Mayor Martin?
And I'm present. We have all councilmembers present. First off, tonight, we're going to have a closed session of the passable City Council, and before we go into that, I will ask the city attorney to enumerate the items we'll be discussing.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We'll be going into closed session on two items this evening. The first is a conference with labor negotiators pursuant to Government Code Section 54957.6. The city negotiators are Ty Lewis, City Manager, Ryan Cornell, Administrative Services Director, and we'll be negotiating with employee organizations, which include the Unrepresented Management Organization, Unrepresented, um, I'm sorry, Passable Police Association, and the Passable Professional Firefighters. The second item we'll be going into closed session on is conference with legal counsel regarding existing litigation. It's pursuant to Paragraph 1 of Subdivision D of Section 54956.9, and the case is Jenna Groom versus the city at all, and it is case number 22019CD10359.
Thank you. Do we have anybody online for public comment for the closed session items?
No, sir.
Very good. In that case, unless there's any further discussion, we will recess the meeting to closed session.
Hello and good evening. This is Pastor Mayor Steve Martin speaking. And before we get started, I'd like to read the following, please. Due to the surge in new cases of COVID-19, the city has returned to virtual public meetings as allowed by the Governor's Executive Order N-2920, which allows for a deviation of teleconference rules required by the Ralph M. Brown Act. City council meetings will be held by teleconference only until further notice. Rather than attending in person, residents should call 805-865-7276 to provide public comment via phone. The phone line will open just prior to the start of the closed session meeting and again prior to the start of the regular meeting. Written public comments can be submitted via email to cityclerk@rcity.com prior to 12 noon of the day of the council meeting to be posted as an addendum to the agenda. If submitting written comments in advance of the meeting, please note the agenda item by number or name. City council meetings will be livestreamed during the meeting, also available to play later on YouTube by accessing the following link: With that, I will call the council to order and invite everyone to mute their microphones with the exception of Councilman Strong, whom I will invite to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Thank you. A pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much, Councilman Strong. For our invocation tonight, we have Pastor Christopher Cole. Pastor Cole, are you with us?
Yes.
Welcome.
Thank you. Let us pray. Heavenly Father God, as we approach your throne in prayer, we are reminded that we have no innate right to ask you for your grace and favor. Though we were created to image forth your glory in all of life, to love you with all of our being and to love our neighbors as ourselves, we have often failed. In sinful selfishness, too often we have complained, slandered, lied, and done evil things. We failed to steward your good creation properly and ignored you while setting up our own solutions to problems we created. So we come in humility and acknowledgement of our weaknesses, our failures, our brokenness, and our sin. We're thankful that you're a gracious God who delights to do good and bless us though we don't deserve it. We praise you because you're a holy God who wants justice, equity, kindness, and mercy in our society even more than we do. We thank you for listening to and answering our prayers. We thank you that you use the actions of wise leaders to guide and bless our community. We thank you specifically for gifting our city with a new city manager, Ty Lewis. We ask that you grant him exceptional wisdom, insight, and skill as he leads our city staff to bless our city. We also ask that you give our mayor and council members true wisdom, sufficient strength, humble confidence, and authentic joy as they represent and serve the people of our community. We're grateful for their efforts and sacrifice on our behalf. We thank you also for our emergency services personnel, firefighters, and police officers who protect our city and ask that you be a shield about them as they carry out their duties. We ask that you strengthen them even as they experience the fatigue and burden of an ongoing pandemic and keep vigilant watch over us. We're grateful that they've also been able to assist sister communities who have been in greater need during this time. We ask that you end this pandemic and that you care for the physicians, nurses, medical personnel, teachers, and others who continue to serve us despite heightened risks to themselves. We pray for a full economic recovery within our community and ask that you bless each of us as citizens with wisdom and humility to know how to care for each other even as we go about our daily lives. We're grateful for the vaccines that are being distributed to combat this disease. We ask that you grant everyone in tonight's meeting a spirit of humility that seeks to listen more than to speak, to care as much about the benefit of others as ourselves, and to lift up the weak and disadvantaged. In all things, we surrender our will to yours. Trusting your providential hand and purpose is always good. We thank you for Jesus Christ, your Son, God made flesh, who is the true answer to all the brokenness of this world. May we find our joy and peace in Him. Amen.
Thank you, Pastor. I would ask now for a roll call of the council, please.
Councilmember Garcia.
Here.
Councilmember Gregory.
Here.
Councilmember Hammond.
Here.
Councilmember Strong.
Here.
And Mayor Martin.
And I'm present. If I could now, I'd like to ask staff online to please introduce themselves so people know who's in attendance.
Yes, Warren Fries, Community Development Director. Joined with me tonight is Darren Nash, our city planner.
Christopher Leckel, Interim Public Works Director, joined by Deidre Esperanza, Capital Projects Engineer, and Roger Oxborough, Airport Manager.
Ryan Cornell. Go ahead, Steve.
Stephen Lampe, Interim Chief of Police.
Brian Cornell, Director of Industrial Services. On the line with me is Shannon Faust, Human Resources Manager.
Elizabeth Hall from the City Attorney's Office.
Ty Lewis, City Manager. Joining me from the City Manager's Office is Melissa Boyer, Dave McQ, and Shawna Howenstein.
Thank you, everyone, and welcome. Prior to this regular session of the Passable City Council, we had an announced closed session meeting. I'll ask the City Attorney now to let us know if there is any reportable action from that.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We went into closed session on two items. The first being conference with labor negotiator pursuant to Government Code Section 54957.6. And we also went in on conference with legal counsel related to existing litigation pursuant to Paragraph 1 of Subdivision D of Section 54956.9. And there was no reportable action on either of those matters.
Thank you very much. Moving now to the first items on our agenda under presentations. Our first presentation is a COVID-19 community update. Mr. Stornetta, Fire Chief.
Good evening, Mayor Martin, members of the council, Jonathan Stornetta, Fire Chief. And I'll give it just a second for the presentation to come up. And next slide, please, Warren. Thank you. 759 new COVID-19 cases were identified in San Luis Obispo County in the past seven days. That's an average of 108 new cases per day. Next slide, please. Our Slow County adjusted case rate is at an all-time high, and the upward trend is continuing. Currently active COVID-19 cases in San Luis Obispo County total 1,552. Next slide, please. The chart on the right represents total cases in Passable since June 15, 2021. As you can see, we continue to experience an upward trend in new cases. In the past 30 days, Passables has seen an increase of 421 new COVID-19 cases. We currently lead the county by 369 total cases, and the age of those being infected has dropped by more than a decade. We are now seeing a significant increase in new cases from those ages 18 to 49. Next slide, please. As of today, 54 people in San Luis Obispo County are hospitalized with COVID-19, and 16 of those are in the ICU. We are currently experiencing hospitalization rates at levels we saw during the first part of the year. Next slide, please. 76.9% of all cases are San Luis Obispo County residents that are not fully vaccinated. 85.5% of hospitalizations are those who are not fully vaccinated. And 79% of all deaths in San Luis Obispo County are those who are not fully vaccinated. Next slide, please. Overall, 52.3% of residents in Passables are fully vaccinated, while the average for San Luis Obispo County is 61.7. Next slide, please. As many of you are probably aware, I disseminated a video last week asking for the community's help in our continued efforts to recover from the COVID-19 pandemic. Not only does Passables continue to lead the county in new COVID-19 cases, but the impacts are affecting our level of service. 15% of all COVID-19 responses in Passables occurred for our department just last month. We saw an increase in COVID responses of 1,150% from July 2021 through August of 2021. I received numerous responses from the public after the video went out, and many of the responses I received were heartbreaking. The responses I received ranged from family members who had lost loved ones to healthcare workers that were exhausted. This is a community that comes together in a time of need. I'm asking the community to stand together more than ever right now if we intend to slow the spread of this virus. Even though the situation has been classified as a pandemic, it is one we can control. We can slow the spread, we can prevent infections, and we can save lives. But only if we follow the medical advice and take simple, practical steps recommended by our county public health department. Preventing the further spread of COVID-19 is a shared responsibility for us all. We are in this together, and we can only get through this together. Next slide, please. As we transport patients to the hospital, we are also seeing how this pandemic is taxing our medical workers and healthcare system. I've invited Dr. Knox here tonight to provide us information on the impacts and challenges he is currently experiencing. Dr. Knox is the Chair of Emergency Medicine at Sierra Vista Hospital and an ER physician at both Sierra Vista and Twin Cities Community Hospital. Welcome and thank you for joining us tonight, Dr. Knox.
Thank you, guys. Can anyone hear me?
Yes.
Great. So, thank you, Jonathan. I mean, I think Jonathan really hit the nail on the head. Exhaustion is one of the biggest things I think the healthcare facility, you know, we're feeling. I mean, when this started 20 months ago, we were game on, prepared, spent countless hours. And, you know, it was very much a team effort, and still with some heartbreaking surges. And, I mean, the biggest frustration was that there was nothing we could do. This was a totally new virus. We didn't have any effective therapy. We definitely didn't have a cure. You know, and you saw what happened across the world is hospitals get filled up. And, you know, and once the resources get stretched, just pandemonium ensues. And, you know, thankfully in Slow County, we were in a bit of a bubble. We never got hit that bad. That being said, we're currently seeing the worst surge that we've seen thus far. And if you look at the numbers, we're actually expected to hit a peak of about 100 hospitalized patients in the next few weeks. So that puts everything at a pretty significant, just horrible situation. I mean, it's not just the people who have COVID. It's everyone else. It's the heart attack that can't get transferred to a hospital because there's simply no one there to take them. It's the bad trauma patient who can't get accepted at a higher level of care like a Stanford or UCSF or UCLA because their hospitals are full of COVID patients. I think the biggest miscommunication is that people think that this just affects people with COVID. And that, like, nothing can be further than the truth. We're seeing in the ER, patients that have like a nasty hip fracture, which needs a specialized orthopedic, waiting in the emergency room for three days to try and get a bed at an outside facility to see the specialist who can take care of them. I mean, it's appalling. And the biggest frustration with it now is that we're in a situation where this is largely preventable. I mean, it's, the vaccination... I mean, man, I'm so frustrated by it at this point. And you see everyone going through it. The vaccine is incredibly effective. It's been given to over five and a half billion people at this point. And we have so much literature on it. And still, you see, like, families and friends are getting driven apart because for some reason, this pandemic and the vaccine that's come out has completely become politicized. And, you know, COVID doesn't give a crap whether someone's liberal or conservative or somewhere in between. It affects everyone just the same. And now we're in a situation where the vaccines are incredibly effective at preventing severe hospitalizations and death. Will they prevent everyone from getting it? No. Will they diminish transmission and caseloads? Absolutely. But the point of the vaccine is that we need to get it out there. We need people to take it, and we need the people to drop the politics of it because it is just... I can't tell you, I'm a research guy coming from USC before I moved up here six years ago. There is more medical research on this vaccine, speaking specifically of the Moderna and the Pfizer vaccines, than there ever has been for a tetanus vaccine or pretty much any other vaccine that people receive. And it's more effective than a shingles vaccine. It's more effective than a chickenpox vaccine. It's more effective than your average flu vaccine. I mean, things that people get all the time. It's more effective than a hepatitis B vaccine. And it just... If we could get people out and get people vaccinated, the hospitalized burden would greatly improve. You want to talk about what's happening right now? I mean, look at Twin Cities, where we've had to actually postpone all elective surgeries that require an overnight hospitalization. Picture the person who needs a knee replacement or the cancer tumor that needs to be removed. I mean, these are things that, are they important? Absolutely. But we don't have the bed space or the medical capacity to take care of it. So they're getting pushed down the road. I mean, that's where things start to, the medical system starts to fall apart. And I just, it's very bleak right now. And we're expected to get worse in the next few weeks. You know, what's going to happen next? Time will tell. But the more time that we give this virus to mutate and turn into something else, I mean, the worse, the worse off we're going to be. You know, Delta, or it could be just the beginning of it. I mean, I don't know. There's probably a slew of questions you guys have. I'm not sure what exactly you guys are looking for from my end. But all I can tell you is that this, we can take care of this. Just need more people to jump on board.
Thank you, Dr. Knox. And I'll just conclude my presentation on the next slide. And then if you could stay on the line in case there are any questions.
Yeah, happily.
Okay. So where can you get the vaccine? I'll go ahead and just read the locations for those that aren't able to see the screen. You can get it at the Health Department on Walnut, the CHC at 2800 Riverside, Albertson's 189 Niblick, and Walmart at 180 Niblick. Testing sites here in Passables, we have the Centennial Park at 600 Nickerson, Med Post at 500 First Street, Med Works in Templeton off Posada, and Dignity Health off West Mall in Atascadero. And with that, that concludes my presentation. And Dr. Knox and I are happy to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you. This is a presentation item. There's no action required of the council. That being said, council questions? We'll start with Councilwoman Garcia, please.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mayor. I have no questions. I really appreciate the update, and this is very heartening for our community. And I just hope that everybody is listening to this tonight, and it really takes it serious. Thank you so much for the update and the information.
Thank you, Councilman Strong.
Yes, I have a question. That is, it did list that only a high percentage of the people that are dying from this were not vaccinated. Of those who were vaccinated that died, did any of those not have an underlying condition that may have aggravated it?
Not that we're aware of. I know some of these patients had underlying leukemias, lymphomas, you know, underlying immunocompromised, you know, that's going to make the vaccine be not as effective. And to the best of my knowledge, while we have had breakthrough cases, we haven't had any breakthrough cases resulting in deaths in otherwise healthy people.
So people who have been vaccinated and do not have any serious underlying condition are relatively safe from death and also from very serious consequences from this pandemic, correct?
That is correct.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Hammond.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Dr. Knox, thank you for your service. I know it's been really texting here for everybody in the healthcare services. But you said something that was very intriguing to me, and I hadn't heard this before. And maybe you can elaborate and at least explain. You said that if everyone were to get the vaccination, then the virus does not have a chance to morph or change. Is that true? Or will it do that naturally? Or how... In other words, by getting the vaccination, are we preventing future variants happening?
In short, you may not be preventing it 100% because nothing in science really is, but it's the best possible way of doing so. With viruses, they rely on a host body in order to replicate. And with every replication, becomes the opportunity for a mutation. So if we can create it so that there's a herd immunity, whether through natural inoculation or through vaccination, the virus doesn't have any host that it can really set up shop and take over the factory and start replicating, you're going to minimize the chance of a mutation occurring. Does that make sense?
Essentially, yes. I think that's important to note that, you know, by doing the right thing and getting the vaccination, that we are doing our part in controlling the virus for future generations or as best we can, anyway. So that's what I had.
Yeah, and I think, I think something that kind of, on the tail end of that is, you know, one of the big things I hear about the vaccine now is a lot of people saying, "Oh, well, people can still get it even though they've had the vaccine, so why bother?" But I think it's kind of the case in point of, back in December, January, when the Alpha strain was the one that was predominantly circulating around, the vaccines, the Pfizer and Moderna, were amazingly effective against those to the point where it was very unlikely there could even be asymptomatic spread, which is why the mask mandates disappeared. And everyone's like, "Okay, CDC said it's all right for everyone to get together and, you know, obviously be responsible." But with the vaccinated individuals, the chances, like, the coverage is just so strong with these. And then as the virus morphs, the Delta variant comes out. And while, again, the vaccinations are really good at preventing severe complications and hospitalizations and death, they're not as good now. They basically dropped from like 98% to now like 88% as far as preventing actual illness in general. And there's always that opportunity for that to get even worse with the future variants. So I mean, that's why, yeah, the more we can minimize, like, stop this thing in its tracks, the better.
So will we be having to put ourselves into a third booster shot? Or how's that going to happen?
So, you know, the Powers That Be have definitely been pushing for a third booster shot. I think the medical literature out there doesn't support it for everybody. It does support it for people with underlying immunologic issues, you know, where their immune system isn't going to work as well. And the way to think of that is that if you get a hepatitis B vaccine, it requires three doses to be an effective vaccine. For people who have an underlying immune history, you could look at it the same way, where maybe, whereas everyone else is getting two doses and they get a good response, those people require three doses to get to that same level. So those people should be getting the booster. I think the idea of giving a blanket booster is a little premature. What we're expecting to happen more likely is as other variants come out, you know, they can tailor these vaccines to target those specific variants. And the simple example of that is the flu vaccine. You know, that changes every single year based on the circulating strains, case in point with the mutations. So I think that's going to be more likely the future of the boosters. But right now, we're just kind of like trying to say, hey, just... Again, it's really hard to know. Does everyone really need a booster? And again, the medical literature doesn't support the recommendations so far from, you know, some of the Powers That Be.
Very good, doctor. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Councilman Gregory?
Yeah. Yeah, thank you for your report. So I have a couple statistical questions. So from what I am reading, about over 90% of the cases are people who have not been vaccinated. Is that correct?
That is, over the, as far as the hospitalized patients, yes.
Yes. And then, and then it sounds to me that the best thing we could do is to continue to promote vaccinating from the primary vaccines to throw, throw, throw this, throw the danger of this disease away or, you know, just keep getting people vaccinated. And that's, that's more important to me than the third shot, it sounds like.
I would agree with that. And I think one of the big things to remember about this virus, and I think people tend to forget it, is that we don't, we still don't have a cure. And a lot of things that we can't cure, if we can come up with a way to prevent, it's that much better. You know, like rabies is a great example. You know, and tetanus is another one. Their treatments for those are very, very not successful, but the vaccines are very good. You know, so if we can't treat it, but we can prevent it, all the better.
And from the numbers you shared with us tonight, it looks like the vaccines are starting to climb for the county. Are we, are we seeing a success anywhere where it's helping? Or where do we need the most help?
It's a good question. I mean, I think, you know, North County, being a North County resident myself, is unfortunately kind of leading the numbers. But I think it's more get the vaccines in any arm available, and that's going to be the biggest help. I think we are starting to see maybe a slight title shift, but as far as like the daily positivity rates. But the problem is that we're still kind of riding that wave of the big surge from a few weeks ago. And something to kind of put it in a different perspective, months ago, when all these numbers were coming out and stuff before the vaccines, the reason we cared about the numbers was because, on average, 12% of a daily positivity rate are expected to require hospitalization in the next two weeks. And of that 12%, maybe up to a third would require ICU stay, that level of care. So when we were looking at the daily positivity rate of like, okay, 100 people were positive today, okay, we were using that to extrapolate and say, okay, well, the burden comes in that 12 people of that 100 are going to require hospitalization in the next two weeks. And then the next day, that number compounds. And the next day, that compounds. And you can see how quickly a system can get overrun, particularly when these patients, once they're hospitalized, can sometimes be there for two or three weeks.
Yeah. And now, is there, is it because of the new strain? It's more powerful that it's creating this?
I think it's, we haven't necessarily shown that the Delta variant is more powerful, like, has a higher mortality rate. What we're showing is that it's more contagious.
Okay.
So, and because it's more contagious, more people are likely to get it. And it has shown to kind of be evading some of the things that, you know, some of the precautions that we have in place.
Well, thank you very much for your work. Well, thank you very much for your work and thank you for sharing the statistics with us. Thank you.
You're welcome.
So doctor, um, I, I'm very happy that you're here tonight to give us this information. I think this is critical for our community and for our county and for our nation, for that matter. Um, I, I've spoken about this in my mayor's blog. I put together a video with my own physician advocating vaccination and I'm working with other mayors in the county right now to put together public service announcements advocating vaccinations in the county. I think the more people that step forward, not just as elected officials or doctors, but just the neighbors that say you've got to get, you need to get vaccinated. And it's come home to me recently very closely because I now have two members of my family that are hospitalized with COVID. And so um I, I, I fear that if we don't prevail, if we don't get more vaccination, that we're going to have more and more of our neighbors and more and more of our, our family members suffering that way. So thank you for being here and thank you and all the people in the medical profession that are doing the work that you're doing. I do have uh one person uh in line for public comment. We will go to that person. It's a, a three minute public comment as usual, and we invite you to the microphone. Sherry Nelson, welcome.
Thank you, Mayor. Wow, I have so much. Uh, I would love to con, uh, connect with Dr. Knox uh, uh, more at length because so much of the research I've done is, is just uh not what he said, but anyway. First thing is if 52% of our residents now are vaccinated and he says uh that the vaccine is, is really helping and really effective, would a reasonable person not think that the cases should be going down and not up? Is my first question. Second is when I talked to the county directly just three days ago, they told me that the ICU total in the county was 20, not 54. And I talked with somebody who knows somebody personally that works in a local hospital. And they are saying that the 90% in there of unvaxxed is not accurate. They're, they're viewing more like 50, 50. Uh, the other thing is I, is I talked to a gentleman who had to have a procedure up in Stanford. And he asked about the vaccine and his Stanford neurologist told him that he needed to get tested for antibodies because if he had antibodies and he took that shot, he could die. Next question I want to address is what I spoke, uh, asked you about today on the radio, Mayor, is uh, it seems like you were not aware that the PCR test, which were basing recommendations for these uh newly engineered shots for everyone, uh, was withdrawn by the CDC July 21st uh because they want a more accurate test that can tell the difference between the flu and COVID. I truthfully find this astonishing that uh the city did not know this information. And it seems to me, just would like to ask it after a year and a half that our representatives would be asking questions to the San Luis quote, "health department" instead of just continuing to follow lockstep with their orders, they should have been uh advised that this test that they're basing all these cases on, by the way, as per the county, only 45% or 45% of those, almost half, aren't even symptomatic. They're not even sick. And the definition, medical definition of a case is anyone who needs uh medical treatment for a physical or mental illness. So when they use the word case, when 95% of those don't even need treatment, is not even the medical definition of a case. And I wonder if anyone could address any of my questions.
We'll give it a shot. Thank you for calling. Okay, um, Dr. Knox, so glad to have a medical person here. We've got several questions for you. First of all, with a 50% vaccination rate, why aren't cases going down?
Well, I think part of that becomes that there is still a lag that needs to happen. So after, when we consider a vaccination rate, you have to remember that you may get the shot to, you know, yesterday, but you're not going to be considered protective for another 30 days after that, assuming that was your second shot. The second part of that is the Delta variant where, again, with the alpha variant, they were 98% effective um, a month out from your second injection. With the Delta, it's 88%, you know, at best. So with the different variant, we are still going to be seeing positive rates. I think one of the biggest, one of my biggest frustrations with the media and, and everything is that everyone keeps talking about the number of positives. Again, it's not so much about the number of positives anymore. It's about what number of that positives are unvaccinated. Because those are the ones that are expected to have a required pull on your health resources. So again, there's, with statistics, there's always a way to kind of skew the numbers a little bit or play with the numbers. And I think, you know, we have to be really careful about that. A few things just to mention really quick. Um, 54, it's not 54 patients in the ICU, it's 54 hospitalized patients in the county with COVID, of which I think as of today, I think it's 16 are in the ICU. So that may have been a misunderstanding as far as, you know, ICU beds versus hospitalized beds, but it's 54 hospitalized patients with COVID at this point. Um, with regards to the antibodies and the urologist thing, I wasn't in the room for that conversation, but I can tell you as a scientist and someone who did a lot of research with this stuff, antibodies, you can get tested for antibodies and that shows that yes, your body has had an immune response to COVID. So for example, I had COVID. I was sick pretty badly back in December. Um, recovered. And if you were to test my body, my blood right now, I'd probably show that I have antibodies. But that has nothing to do with the vaccine causing any kind of an effect or, or dying. They work in two different ways. In fact, after doing all the research, I went and got the vaccine about 30 days after I recovered because I was like, okay, well, my body has seen different parts of this, but this vaccine is so finely tuned to the surf, the spike protein. And it's safe. Why wouldn't I want more protection? You know, it's like we all go out and we buy a car. We're not just happy with seatbelts anymore. We want airbags as well. You know, and I think that's kind of a good way to look at it. And, and also just in general, a lot of people talk about this, well, most people aren't going to get super sick. And yeah, that's true. Most people aren't going to get super sick. But why would you want to take that risk? I mean, again, you get in your car, you drive to Lowe's, you put a seatbelt on. Is there a good chance that you're going to get in a car accident? Probably not, but you're still not going to take that risk. The problem with this illness again is that we don't have a cure. And it's not just affecting immunocompromised patients or people with underlying health conditions or anything like that. It's affecting healthy people in their twenties, their thirties. It's affecting kids now. And it's like, why would we not want to do something that kind of encourages the safety of everyone and ourselves? I'm 39 years old. I'm an avid surfer. I can hold my breath for two minutes underwater. I'm super healthy. COVID kicked my ass and my oxygen numbers dropped down to the eighties and I was classified as severe COVID. I have no health conditions and it still happened. And then there's the, the aspect of what happens down the line. We're seeing a lot of these patients now with these chronic COVID or COVID, you know, uh, smoldering symptoms. And we don't know what to make of it yet because it hasn't been around long enough. But yeah, someone may recover, but are they going to always be like, you know, a pulmonary cripple? Are they going to be at the same level of health that they were at before? And it's just, there's a lot of unknowns. But again, it's a matter of, yeah, you probably will be okay, maybe, hopefully, but there's no guarantee that you will. And coming from the lines of, you know, someone who's in the front lines, I've seen too many people in their thirties who are super sick and die from something at this point that was preventable. And that's the part that's just making us, I think, really frustrated and heartbreaking. And it's a thing that we need to do better. Um, with regards to the PCR test comments, we've always had a PCR test that can tell the difference between COVID and influenza. In fact, to date, we still have not had a positive influenza in the county. This makes the first year ever that we didn't have a flu, um, which is a little weird, but expected given the fact that everyone was locked down during flu season. So the PCR tests are very good. They're very accurate. In fact, they're the most accurate tests out there. Um, the antigen test, there's a little bit of a variation. But again, sometimes with some of these articles or things that are being portrayed in the media, they're misunderstanding words or they're using them incorrectly. And I think that's the part where, you know, again, if you, if I have a leak in my kitchen, I'm calling a plumber. I'm not calling an electrician. And I think what we're seeing and now is a lot of people are having all these health questions and they're turning to the internet or they're turning to a friend or a family member. And it's like, if you're going to call the plumber for the leak in your kitchen, why are you not going to call him and talk to your doctor about the health situation going on? We have so many years of additional education on this to understand what's, you know, what's the physiology and everything behind it. And it just seems like go to the source and get that information. And again, unfortunately, just like anything out there, there's good plumbers and there's bad plumbers. So I don't know what that urologist was saying, the antibody comment. But again, maybe if something was misunderstood.
So there was another, there was another comment. Apparently the caller has a friend in healthcare that indicates that the true ratio of vaccinated to unvaccinated people hospitalized is closer to 50, 50 than 90%.
No, and that may be, again, a misunderstanding of the term. There's, when we say unvaccinated, a lot of times that blankets into partially vaccinated. So someone who got their vac, you know, got the first dose of their vaccine three days ago and came into the hospital sick is going to be classified as an unvaccinated person because they're not considered fully vaccinated. So maybe the person in healthcare that they were talking to is misunderstanding that part. But as far as the fully vaccinated part, that is accurate. We are not seeing fully vaccinated individuals require a significant part of our hospital resources right now. Um, and then as far as caseload, again, maybe, yeah.
Go ahead. I'm sorry. I didn't, I, I didn't mean to interrupt. Go ahead.
Oh, no worries. I mean, when we're talking about the pandemic, we're talking about positive cases. And it's not about whether someone's sick or not. It's purely based on a positive PCR test or antigen test sometimes. The antigen tests are great because if they're positive, they're positive. If they're negative, it's still questionable whether they're actually genuinely negative. But with other types of illnesses, like if we are presenting a case on a patient, like in grand rounds or conference, we're typically referring to, here's just this case. You're kind of using it as a, here's the story. Um, but the medical definition in this situation for cases is positive PCR test. It's not people who are symptomatic.
Okay. Thank you for addressing all the questions that the caller um gave. I appreciate that. Anything else before we move on?
Mayor Martin, if I could just make one correction on the testing sites. It said on the slideshow there, it was at Centennial Park. That has been moved to the train station on Park Street. So I just wanted to make sure the public was aware of that.
Very good. We do appreciate this update on the COVID-19 situation. Appreciate the doctor's presence and able to give uh medical answers to medical questions. And with that, I think we're going to move on to the next order of business. Thank you very much.
Thank you, everybody.
We are now at item number two, which is our capital projects report. Deidre Esperanza, please.
Good morning, Mayor, members of the city council. We'll just wait for the slideshow to come up. So this is September 7th, 2021, update of Public Works Construction Projects. As you know, Dry Creek Road from the Warbirds to Jardine is in construction currently. You can see by these photos that the old asphalt has been removed and we've graded the roadbed. Here's some more pictures of the graded roadbed. The trench on the left side is for the fiber, the future fiber conduit, fiber optic conduits that's been uh installed. We have drain lines and inlets that have been completed. There's some more drain lines and uh inlets and um conduits with a fiber. So essentially the undergrounds are all complete. And the next phase is, um, and the concrete is also complete. However, I don't have pictures of those right now, but if you go out there, you will see the concrete is also completed, which brings us to the last phase of the project, which is the pavement itself. If you recall, this is a public, a, a full depth reclamation process in which we introduce some line into the existing dirt and will chemically react to the dirt and it will become uh hard enough to become the base for the road. And so that will occur starting next week. And that will happen Monday, Tuesday and Wednesday. And then the next day, Thursday and Friday, we will do the final surface of asphalt. So technically uh by, in two weeks, we will have a fully paved roadway and then we'll have to do final striping and cleaning up of the sides and driveways. The other project that's coming up for construction is the intersection at Golden Hill and Union Road. Uh, here is, so we're continuing with the community outreach. So for now, we've uh received several phone calls from people adjacent to the project to meet with them, show them the proposed project, show them what's the impact to their property is during construction. We've also received phone calls from individuals um asking for more questions. So we're answering those as we get them. And this is the eventual look of that intersection once it's all down. I just want, I know I've said this before, but we continue to have people questioning why we are doing a roundabout in lieu of just putting a traffic signal. So I thought I'd just go over this real quick, just to remind people again of why we're doing that. So the inner, the existing intersection angles do not meet traffic signal design. It needs to be as close as possible to a 90-degree T-intersection. The closest that we could get to the 90 degree is a 70-degree intersection as shown here. But even with this 70-degree intersection, we would be required to purchase uh most of that property on the west, on the west side, the northwest side, that pretty much wipes out the enterprise rent a car and almost needing to purchase half the property of that vacant lot to the east. And that would have added uh quite a bit of money to the project. I think we're thinking of a million dollars just to acquire right of way. And so because of that, we are doing this uh roundabout that pretty much fits into the existing right of way and we don't need to acquire any right of way. And based on modeling and projection that we did by the traffic engineer, this would serve, this configuration would serve the city well into the um project build out of Chandler Ranch and all the other specific plants. So we have our annual street maintenance project um that is on your agenda for award tonight. And this is the list of the streets. And this is the uh, a map of where the streets are located. So once you approve this project for on tonight's agenda, we will then move into construction. In the meantime, um, you approved the maintenance of the streets as listed here. Sometime back, we had our pre-construction meeting. And um, so here's the, a, a, a map that shows all those streets. We had our pre-construction meeting and the first order of business is for them to do the curb ramp upgrades and concrete. And here's some photos of them starting with those improvements. So they will need to do all the curb ramps. There's over 20 curb ramps that will need to be upgraded and some concrete. And then they will do the final pavement maintenance. So we're already also starting on the fire station safety training center. We had a groundbreaking ceremony last Friday. Just a reminder, this is a three-phase project. First phase is actual, is just the dirt work, which is the one we're going to be starting soon. That's the grading, detention basins, sewer lines, water lines, and the construction of Ardmore Road. That will be, that will follow with phase two, which is that uh building, that's the lower building on the right. And we want to finish that as soon as possible so we could put our staff there and we can get, begin staffing the trainings, the fire station. We'll also start um the bay for the fire engine equipment. And so they can function essentially as a fire station and be of service to the community while we're getting ready and designing the ultimate project, which is the taller building on the left for the final phase for a complete fire station number three. So this just shows the first phase, which is the grading and the detention basins and the utilities that will be accomplished. And again, this will be starting next week. It does have a 65 working day duration, so we anticipate getting this completed um by the end of December or early into 2022. And here was the groundbreaking ceremony last Friday. And then I just wanted to share this with you. So every um month or so, we receive a update of our current pavement condition from our Street Saver computer model. You can see highlighted, our current PCI is 50. We started out at 54 in 2017. And you're probably wondering, well, why are we going down to 50 when we've done so many street maintenance? That's precisely why we need to do an update of our PCI um analysis, which you approved sometime back. And so what we're going to do is do a field review of all the streets that we've done and also the other streets that we haven't touched. and also the other streets that we haven't touched anything. We will then update the database that would put there that certain streets have been maintained. And so the hope is that, I'm sure, that the current PCI of 50 will come back up because we have done street maintenance. So if we don't do any update, then this will just continue to show that we're degrading, which is not really true because we have spending some money to do, to do maintenance on our streets, albeit it's a, it's a slow increase on the PCI, but at least it should be more than 50. So that's why we're doing the updates, starting in a couple of weeks. That concludes my report and I'll be happy to answer your questions.
Thank you. This is, again, an information report. No council action is necessary, but we will have some questions and comments, starting with Councilwoman Garcia.
Thank you, Mayor. No questions. Thank you so much for the updated, Deidre.
Thank you. Councilman Strong?
No, I appreciate the update too. I think we're maybe in the right direction. I think it's going to improve drastically in the next year or two. Thank you, Deidre.
Thank you. Councilman Hammond?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Deidre, regarding the Golden Hill, Union Road Roundabout, or Dogbone, if you want to call it that. We talked about this before with regard to design of the actual mounds. Is there anything that was designed or is it just going to be a dirt mound? Or are we going to want to have maybe a little committee to figure out? Because it's quite unique to have a community decorate or put something particular to that part of the town in a roundabout. It's quite common. And so I'm wondering, have we addressed that with this design at all?
Yes, we have. Right now, it's slated for some quote, minor landscaping. We don't really want to, we haven't really done a robust landscaping only because we want to minimize possibilities of trucks needing to get into it or creating any kind of a sight distance to the driver. So I can give you what's, what's planned right now for construction and you can take a look at it and see what you think.
Yeah, I'd like to see that. And then again, this is more, not taken away from the sightlines, but basically more of a decorative statement as you come into town, that you see something there as you're driving around the roundabout. It's quite popular in Europe to have each little community have its own little design on that. I'm just wondering if the public might want to engage in doing something and bring it forward to council for approval. And that might be just another little project on the side. That's all I was wondering. So yeah, if you can send me what you got, that would be a good start. Thank you.
Okay, will do.
Thank you. Councilman Gregory?
Yeah, John, it's a good idea. We call that gateway decor. I like it. So, Deidre, I had a quick question on Dry Creek, just for the public review. So we are sharing that effort with the county and they're assisting with that. Are we, are you straightening out the angles of the turns and basically making the road easier to travel on?
Yes, actually, if, not only are we doing the, whoops, worse. If you look here, it's kind of hard to tell on these pictures, but this, that road used to curve more to the east, to the south. And it's a little bit straight now. If you go out there right now, you'll notice that the horizontal curve has been more, is more gentle. And we're also making the vertical curve much better than it was in, in existing. So maybe at the next, well, I'm sure by the next report, I will have a fully paved pictures because we're starting the pavement next week. Or you could actually drive there right now and you can see that that horizontal curve has been minimized as far as the angles and sharp angles.
And then on the roundabout itself, for people wanting to know more information, is that posted on our city website?
Yes, it is.
All right. Thank you very much.
Mr. Mayor, question again for Deidre on, on Dry Creek. I forgot something.
Yes, Councilman Hammond?
Are we putting in, yeah, thank you, sewer? A member of the Erskine Project out there and by the Lynx Golf Course was conditioned to bring the sewer. Is there any undergrounding going on in that roadway at this point? Or how's that going to happen if it does move forward?
Well, we've installed all the undergrounds for the, for the Dry Creek. If you recall, the first phase from airport to the Warbirds, we installed the sewer main as far as we can take it to the east and then, and the water main. And then we, we put a sewer, at the end of that sewer main, kind of by the Warbirds, we stubbed a sewer lateral to the north. And that is the sewer stub that the Erskine Project will be tying into. And they will be constructing, that'll be a private sewer. They'll tie into that sewer lateral and it'll be next to the, it'll be next to the road outside the paved area.
Good. That's what, yeah. So in other words, they're not going to touch the newly paved road. It'll be to the north of that, I'm assuming, in the dirt area. So, okay.
Yes.
Thank you for that report. If no further questions from council, I see no one standing in line for public comments on this item. So we will move on to our next order of business. Thank you, Deidre. Item number three on the agenda tonight is our Constitution Week proclamation. I understand we have no one to receive the proclamation tonight, but I'll be happy to read it nevertheless. This is the City of El Paso, Robles proclamation declaring September 17th through the 23rd as Constitution Week, whereas September 17th of 2021 marks the 234th anniversary of the drafting of the Constitution of the United States of America by the Constitutional Convention, whereas it is fitting and proper to accord official recognition to this magnificent document and its memorable anniversary and to the patriotic celebrations that will commemorate the occasion. And whereas public law 915 guarantees the issuing of a proclamation each year by the President of the United States of America designated September 17th through the 23rd as Constitution Week. And whereas we ask our citizens to reaffirm the ideals the framers of the Constitution had in 1787 by vigilantly protecting the freedoms guaranteed to us through this guardian of our liberties, remembering that lost rights may never be regained. And now therefore be it resolved that I, Stephen W. Martin, by virtue of the authority vested in me as mayor, speaking on behalf of the entire city council, to hereby proclaim the week of September 17th through the 23rd as Constitution Week. And we'll make sure the appropriate person receives that proclamation. We come now to the general public comments section of our agenda. This is a time set aside with the public to address the council on items that do not appear on the agenda tonight. If you are going to speak, we ask you to please begin by stating your name and address. Each person is limited to three minutes. Any person or subject requiring more than three minutes may be scheduled for a future council meeting, referred to committee or staff. Those persons wishing to speak on any items scheduled on the agenda will be given an opportunity to do so at the time that item is being considered. And as of right now, I have no one from the public waiting in line on the phone to make public comment. I will close general public comments, bring it back to the agenda. I will ask the city manager now if there are any agenda items tonight that will be deferred.
No, Your Honor.
Very well. We move on. Consent agenda. Items on the consent calendar are considered routine, not requiring separate discussion. However, if discussion is wanted by a member of the council or public, the item may be removed from the consent calendar and considered separately. Council members and members of the public may offer comments or ask questions of clarification without removing an item from the calendar. Individual items are approved by the vote that approves the consent calendar. Unless an item is pulled for separate consideration, items pulled from consent will be heard at the end of the meeting. I will go to the council first for questions or asking for items to be withdrawn, starting with Councilwoman Garcia.
No, sir, Mayor. Nothing to be pulled.
Thank you. And Councilman Strong?
No, sir. Nothing from me.
Thank you. Councilman Hammond?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm not sure if we need to pull it or just more information. On items 10, that's the country club streets. And on the 11, also, that's the test of Tower Road treatment.
Did you want to just ask a brief question on those, John?
Yeah, actually, let's, let's go ahead and start with regard to, well, I think, actually, 10, we might want to pull. I'd like to get a little deeper in there. Maybe it's in discussion. But, and then on item 11, that I think is Deidre's purview there with regard to the treatment of Tower Road, a new special treatment that we're experimenting with. I'd like to hear a little more about that for the public benefit and mine with regard to what we're planning on doing and how it might be beneficial to the West Side streets.
Sure, Deidre. Can you give us a thumbnail on that?
Yes. So the, the Department of Justice, who lays out the laws on whether, when streets are required to upgrade curb ramps using certain maintenance treatments are very strict in that only certain types of maintenance can be done, like almost just a slurry seal, a very thin type of surface sealing that can be done before then you'll be required to upgrade the curb ramps. So we, we talked to two people and they came up with two delivery of just a heavier slurry seal with fiber in it and then some chip seal with, with, it's an asphalt chip seal with some fog seal. So there was two treatments that we want to try out. And so we thought we'd use Tower Road. It's a straight road. It's out of the way. And then we would monitor the way it's functioning. And then perhaps we can use these types of treatments that we could test out on some of our West Side streets. So this would be the asphalt rubber chip seal with fog seal. And the second one is what's called a type three slurry seal with some fiber in it.
Yeah, that's very interesting. So in other words, obviously, Tower Road has no sidewalks, curb ramps, or anything like that. So that doesn't really become an issue with ADA requirements. But are we going to then on Tower, repair it first? In other words, fill, you know, the hotspots and then come over with this treatment that would basically bring it back up to a more flat or straighter grade?
Yes. Yeah, the reason we picked that road is because there's no ramps or sidewalks that exist. And then it's also something that the city staff could evaluate and see how it functions for future part of our toolkit, toolbox that we could dip into when we needed to do West Side streets.
Exactly right. That's, I'm glad you're getting into that, Deidre. I really applaud you for trying to figure out ways to do this. I mean, we just don't have the money, I think, in my opinion, to get into changing curb ramps that are just a slight degree off. But this might be an opportunity that the public can still see some really great streets, you know, for less money. So again, thank you very much for that. And then we'll talk about item 10 later. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Councilman Gregory?
Yeah, I would, I just want a little bit more information on a couple of items that maybe Deidre can help us with. Can you just tell us on item seven on the arrangement for the 24th Street Bridge? I know that you're continuing to do the design on that. Can you share with us what it's going to look like when we're done with that project, Deidre?
Sure. So once we're done with that project, right now, there's really no sidewalk to speak of. There's like a strip of concrete, but people use that as a sidewalk. But it's, it's very, very narrow. It's not really a sidewalk. So once we're all said and done, we will be installing a bridge that will have a real, real sidewalk, five-foot sidewalk on both sides of the bridge. It will be wide enough to accommodate striped bike lanes and then two lanes of traffic, of course, and a median lane for dedicated left turns onto Riverside. The, the road, the bridge will be over the railroad. We're required to put in a fencing, allow the side as a requirement. And so we will be doing some ornamental fencing on both sides of the bridge. We're also required to put streetlights on the bridge. So we will be installing some ornamental streetlights. There will be a pretty hefty retaining wall on the south side that can be seen from the event center parking lot. So we will be treating that wall with some texture of some, some aesthetic so it doesn't look quite so ugly as a concrete retaining wall. So we're going to be doing some kind of aesthetic for that retaining wall. So I think, I don't know what else you need other than, I think that's it. So the, so the way we're going to construct the project, we will leave the existing bridge for everybody to use as a, as a, you know, for a traffic lane while we construct the new bridge on the north side. Then once the north side bridge is complete, we will then move traffic to the north side and then tear down the old bridge and put in a new one. And then in the end, we'll do a closure pour that ties the two bridges together. So that will be the mode of operation. So people will still be able to use the bridge. So first they'll use existing and then we'll move them to the north side.
That's quite a, quite a project. And what are the, what are the lane widths on the lanes going over the bridge for the traffic?
I think, yeah, they're about 12, 12 feet.
Okay. That sounds good. And then I just have one minor question again on item nine. I think I saw this there, but that's just for basically rehabilitation of all the West Side streets, including 19th and Olive and all that. Is that true?
Yes, whatever is on the staff report, I think we have an exhibit that shows those. Yes, the staff report shows Olive from 19th to 23rd and then 16th from Spring to 17th, 17th, 18th, 19th, from Spring to Pine.
So the, and the 17th Street project, is that going to be the part that's by the school? Or is that going to happen later, at a later date?
The 17th, you mean west of Spring Street or Pine Street? We are, we are waiting for that, for the school to finish their project. And then we will come behind that and get that started. I think we already hired someone to get the design going so that once the school's done, we can hop onto it and get that going.
Very good. Thank you very much, Deidre. Those are all the questions I have.
Sure.
Thank you. So I will now open the consent calendar for public comments. I see no one from the public standing in line on the phone line to make a comment. So I will close public comment, bring it back to the council, entertain a motion for approval of the consent calendar minus item number 10, which has been pulled by Councilman Hammond.
Mr. Mayor? Go ahead. John, you want to make a motion?
Yeah, I would, if you can, Steve, on this one. Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion then to approve items four through nine, 11 through 15. And I will abstain on item five, check number 48522 on page 34, is my son's company who did some repair work at the sewer station.
Second, that motion?
I have a motion, motion by Councilman Hammond, second by Councilman Gregory. If there's no further discussion, roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Hammond?
Aye.
Councilmember Gregory?
Aye.
Councilmember Garcia?
Aye.
Councilmember Strong?
Aye.
Mayor Martin?
Aye. Motion passes 5-0. Thank you very much. Would like to call on the city manager now to please give us a short rundown of the items on the consent calendars. For people listening tonight who have not seen the agenda, we'll know what actions have been taken.
Thank you, Your Honor. So we have 12 items on the consent calendar this evening. A few of those have already been covered, but I'll go through them one by one. Item number four, pardon me, is approval of our city council minutes from August 17th. And of course, item number five is our receipt of warrant register, which is the day-to-day business that the city pays in bills. Number six is receipt of our advisory body minutes, which include our tax oversight committee, supplemental tax oversight committee, senior citizen advisory committee, Parks and Recreation Advisory Committee. Item number seven was discussed in detail. Item number eight is approval of an airport lease agreement with Triana Winery. They approved, there was an approval of an airport lease with Triana Winery LLC and airport RV and boat storage, a little bit of a swap of land positions there. Item number nine was also discussed in detail already for everybody. Item number 10, 10 is going to be pulled. And item number 11 was also discussed. Item number 12, approval of side letter of agreements with the Paso Robles Police Association, Paso Robles Professional Firefighters and Service Employees International Union. It's a revision to the Unrepresented Confidential Professional and Management Group Wage and benefit to summary as well as the master pay schedule. This involves changes to the city's insurance with CalPERS and executed cost-sharing agreements. changes to the city's insurance with CalPERS and executed cost-sharing agreements regarding that. It also is an increase in wages for the Passerables Police Officers Association to the police officers as well as dispatchers and dispatch supervisor in the amount of 5%. There's also an adjustment for firefighters, the paramedics adjustment, as well as our SEIU group with regards to special compensation for having a driver's license to operate heavy equipment. Item number 13, pardon me, approval of mutual aid reimbursement. This is a regular agreement that's executed with the state for reclassify, or excuse me, for reimbursement of salaries for specific functions related to our, our agreement with the state to provide emergency, sorry, the name is escaping me right now, our, our team that I will look at the staff report. I'm failing to remember it. Mutual aid assignments for off-duty firefighters and, and those that are part of the incident management team. That was the word I was looking for. Sorry about that. And then number 14 is an approval of an agreement with Savant Solutions for Technology Security. Our IT department is always working on our network and looking at security to keep our systems safe. This is a three-year project for a total not to exceed $179,000. And number 15 is receipt of our monthly investment portfolio, which is our investments throughout the city, including monthly treasurer's reports for April, May, and June. With that, I'm happy to answer any questions if the council has any.
I don't believe we do. And barring any further questions, thank you for that update. We'll move on to the next item on the agenda. We have no public hearings tonight. Our next item is a discussion item, number 16, authorization for the mayor to sign a letter of opposition to Senate Bill 9. City manager.
Yes, council, thank you very much. So Senate Bill 9 is, was introduced by Senator Tony Aitkins when the current legislative or legislative session began this year. It's a controversial bill that's made its way through the Senate and the Assembly and is now sitting on the governor's desk for signature. It's essentially a local planning and zoning control bill that circumvents public input by requiring ministerial approval of housing developments. Ministerial approval, for those that don't know, means that it is without any kind of discretionary review, hearing, or environmental reviews on developments of two residential units on a single parcel in single-family residential zones if the project meets certain criteria. Additionally, the city would be limited to applying only objective zoning standards, objective subdivision standards, and objective design standards on the project. And these standards may not be imposed if the application, excuse me, if the application of those standards to the development project physically preclude the construction of two units of at least 800 square feet in floor area each. Also, the city would be precluded from imposing setbacks of greater than four feet from the rear and side of lot lines. So in summary, if the proposed housing development meets certain requirements, primarily designed to prevent the demolition of existing affordable housing or displacement of moderate, low, or very low-income families or historic properties, it can be approved ministerially. If enacted, SB 9 would undermine local land use authority by imposing state legislation on local government agencies and municipalities. The legislation undermines other state laws, including the CEQA laws, by establishing ministerial review process without processes, without discretionary review or public hearing. One side note for our area that's very concerning is that SB 9 makes no consideration of constraints of local terrain and the ability to evacuate the community safely and effectively in the event of a wildfire or other natural disasters. The city contains and is surrounded by areas designated by CAL FIRE as very high fire hazard severity zones, which is not considered within the legislation or addressed. Of course, the city historically has strongly opposed legislation that reduces local control or limits local land use and authority. Given the bill's widespread impact on the city's ability to review certain proposed housing developments, the staff is recommending the city council authorize the mayor to sign a letter to Governor Newsom as drafted with any revisions that the council sees fit, asking for a veto and opposition to SB 9. With that, I'm happy to answer any questions the council might have.
Thank you. Council questions? Councilwoman Garcia, please.
No questions, sir.
Thank you. Councilman Strong.
No question. I'll have comments later.
Thank you. Councilman Hammond.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Ty, it sounds like, again, the the letter that is just going to, you know, give us the opposition from our council about this particular legislation that's moving forward. But do you have any feeling for any good that's going to do? Are there other cities that are gaining the same proposals, you know, from their councils? Have you heard anything, basically?
Yes, Mr. Hammond. The answer to your question is yes. There has been a lot of opposition to SB 9 since it was first introduced. Several of the California City Leagues and others have drafted letters early on, requested their city's input as far back as February, and opposition letters and requests for vetoes are still coming in. I'm unaware of what our local cities are doing at this point within the with the county. There's various opinions about this. But based upon community feedback and council input, we brought this forward for your consideration.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Did you and your meetings with the other mayors discuss this at all? Not with the mayors in this county, but I have been involved with the Legislative Committee at the CAL Cities Organization, and they're making a push to all the cities to engage cities in commenting on this legislation. Very good. Thank you. That's all I have, Mr. Mayor. Thank you. Councilman Gregory.
Yeah, I had kind of the same question. Ty, as far as the League of Cities, are they strongly opposing this as well?
Yes, that's right, Mr. Gregory. There's been several requests called action for the cities to take up this matter to retain local control.
I'll reserve my other comments for later. Thank you.
Thank you very much. We will take this to public comment. I am looking at the, I'm looking at the log here. I don't see anyone logged in for a public comment, so I will close public comment, bring it back to the council for discussion, and start with Councilwoman Garcia.
I have nothing further, sir.
Thank you. Councilman Strong.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. And I was on that committee at the, at the League of Cities, now called CAL Cities, discussing this. And we did take an opposition position. I also spoke personally with Senator Weiner about this. And the biggest problem I had with any of this is that those who were proposing this have absolutely no respect for the public, for the voters, or for local government. They think that we're idiots. They think that we don't know how to run our own business. And they think that the public is totally prejudiced and will use their opportunities to have public hearings to exhibit their prejudice and, and be mean and nasty to people they didn't like, be they the homeless, be they low-income, or be they a particular racial or ethnic group. And I think it's a, it's a bad law, and it's a bad slap in the face to the people of this state. And I strongly favor our putting this, you know, bill in, this letter in. I talked to my staff at the state level today, and they informed me that many cities are getting on board and opposing this particular bill. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Hammond.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, again, I, I'm glad we took this up. I remember mentioning this a few meetings ago that we shouldn't make some sort of statement. I'm glad we're doing that. I do remember, though, that our Senator John Baird and Councilwoman Jordan Cunningham, I think, have voted in the affirmative for this, which is, if I'm not mistaken, is not a good sign. So that's why I was curious, you know, just how much cities are getting together. That's the only way we're going to be able to, you know, strengthen numbers. And Passerables stating our position here is clear, but I'm hoping that we see other cities standing behind us as well. So that's all I had. I'm ready to make a motion on this anytime, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. I'll go to Councilman Gregory to see if he has a comment first.
Yeah, I would agree with, with Councilman Hammond. I think this is an absurd law where they take all our rights away as a city and a community to help us develop our community. So I'm, I'll be there to second it.
Thank you. Thank you. If there's no further conversation on this subject, Mr. Hammond, you had a motion? Yes, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to go ahead and make a motion to authorize the mayor to sign a letter of opposition to Senate Bill number nine.
Second by Gregory.
Motion by Councilman Hammond, second by Councilman Gregory. If there's no further discussion, roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Hammond?
Aye.
Councilmember Gregory?
Aye.
Councilmember Garcia?
Aye.
Councilmember Strong?
Aye.
Mayor Martin?
Aye. Motion passes 5-0. I believe it was the last meeting and the meeting before we had the discussion and the vote regarding empowering the mayor to write letters without having to consult with council in cases where it was time-sensitive. In the future, we're going to be very aware of these things that happen affecting our city and try to react more quickly to them because I think the sooner our legislators hear our positions, the better off we're going to be. Thank you all for your support on that. Item number 17, approval of budget allocation of American Rescue Plan Act of 2021. Mr. Cornell.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and City Council. Ryan Cornell, Administrative Services Director, here tonight to present to you the budget approval for the use of American Rescue Plan Act, also known as ARPA. The ARPA is the latest COVID federal stimulus relief package signed by President Biden. It provides about $350 billion to states, counties, cities, and other governmental agencies to continue to support public health response and really to lay down the foundation for a strong and equitable economic recovery. The city of Passerables is anticipated to receive approximately $5.5 million over the next two fiscal years from these ARPA monies. This additional funding has been excluded from the recently adopted budget for fiscal year 2122 because the allowable uses of funds were still being developed. On July 8, 2021, staff presented to the city council an overview of the ARPA program, including the allowable and allowable uses. Additionally, city council also provided staff with preliminary feedback on the most appropriate use of the funds. The purpose of this report tonight is to appropriate, appropriate and earmark the ARPA funds for the specific purposes I'm about to go over with you on tonight. But real quick on a recap of what ARPA funds can be used for, it does provide city government substantial amount of flexibility to meet local needs, including supporting households, small businesses, impacted industry, essential workers and the like. Again, the intent of ARPA is to help the economy recover faster from the impacts of COVID-19. Because of that, the monies cannot be used to replenish reserves or rainy day funds. It cannot be used to pay off or reduce the city's pension obligation, nor can it be used to pay down existing debt. Generally speaking, these funds are forward-looking, so expenditures spent prior to March 3 of 2021 are not allowable. The allowable uses of ARPA funds are kind of summarized in four main categories shown on the screen here. The first one being a revenue loss replacement for those governments that incurred some revenue loss because of the COVID pandemic. Secondly, COVID-19 expenditures, including small business assistance, households, some of the hardest industries in economic recovery is kind of that second, a large bucket. Premium pay for essential workers is the third piece. And then lastly, investments in water, sewer, and broadband infrastructure. I don't know if you recall from a couple months ago, but in July time, I was a little nervous on this city's revenue loss calculation because it's the city's revenue loss that gives us the most flexibility with the use of these funds. I did recently redo the revenue loss calculation, and I am feeling a little bit more confident in that all of our ARPA monies can qualify under that to the revenue loss category, which pretty much gives our flexibility pretty much to anything, any general government purpose. But based on the feedback that we received in July, staff is recommending an allocation to three programs, housing and homelessness. It also includes additional cleanup, enhanced enforcement, and other mental health services, help towards funding our major unfunded infrastructure projects, and then lastly, expansion of recreation amenities. But before I dive into a little more details on each one of those categories, I did want to mention that we, there was some discussions on applying some sort of house, these money source household assistance specifically towards the water and utility bill, building forgiveness. And it really did seem like an appropriate use of funds because even today, and as it was back then, we have over 300 accounts that have a balance of 60 more, 60 days or more, and totals were around $300,000. But as staff and I were kind of developing what this program could possibly look like, it became abundantly clear if it's, yeah, if it was even feasible to tell really which the customer accounts are being adversely impacted by the pandemic and which accounts have balances only because the city and really the state has prevented discontinuation of water received non-payment. There was also a concern, and we knew of certain customers paying their utility bills on their credit cards so that at least their utility accounts were paid in the whole. So those customers weren't necessarily gathered in this initial statistic, but they are just as impacted by someone who just didn't pay their utility bill. So I say, all of that being said, we have found out that the state has implemented a new program for household assistance, as well as paying for utility bills. The state program is called Housing is Key. And so rather than staff developing our own internal program, it's our recommendation to just allocate or to direct individuals that are having issues paying their utility bill to that state program. Moving on to the housing and homelessness, it does continue to be a challenge in our community. And although we have taken significant strides to address homelessness, additional resources are needed to help resolve this crisis. As such, staff recommends an allocation of about 500,000 of ARPA funds towards a variety of housing and homelessness initiatives, but mainly with an emphasis on education, prevention, and enforcement. To start, it's anticipated that a series of public outreach initiative focused workshops related to the future of unhoused populations with the city be conducted. This would be a facilitated workshop with the aid of diverse stakeholders, identify social, technological, economic, environmental, and political trends, and then even events, you know, related to the unhoused population. We're thinking that this workshop will be comprehensive, it will be community-developed and action-oriented. The other component to this initiative is to provide emergency housing to household, to homelessness populations. Ideally, these funds would be directed to a local nonprofit. And then lastly, the funds will be used to increase mental health, drug and alcohol treatments for the homelessness. You know, at the, you know, what's all said and done, again, we're looking at about a half a billion dollars towards all these mental health initiatives. The second program that we, that staff is recommending, ARPA money go to, is really the majority of the funds go to, is these major unfunded infrastructure projects. As you know, the city will be constructing some significant improvements over the next several years. And the city is trying to get federal, state, or local grants to fund, or at least partly fund some of these more costly projects. But as you know, these grants are competitive. And then we really do need to start figuring out strategies to make sure that these projects move forward should the city not get any sort of grant funding. So that being said, the majority of ARPA monies is being recommended being directed towards some of these major unfunded infrastructure projects, which include the Wareware Creek Bridge and Roundabout, or the realignment and construction of new airport road and Union Road, or the construction of the 46 East Overpass. Thirdly, they could be used towards the Vine Street Bridge and that road realignment. Again, the $4.2 million, that's the ARPA monies that's being dedicated towards these unfunded major infrastructure, still won't be enough to get those projects 100% funded, but at least major infrastructure, still won't be enough to get those projects a hundred percent funded, but at least make it a pretty good stride to get us there. And then just to remember, a reminder here on these ones too, since we're talking about future potential capital projects, the city has until December thirty first, two thousand and twenty four, to enter into some sort of obligation with the construction company to use these funds, and then by December thirty first, two thousand and twenty six, to have these funds completely expended. And then lastly, staff is recommending an allocation to additional recreation amenities. At the regular meeting on August third, council received a report regarding pickleball court capacity. And then at that meeting, you approved to initiate the design and construction of the courts at Sherwood, including up to eight lighted courts, construction of restrooms, and parking improvements. The total estimated cost of this is about one point two million dollars, just that little kind of narrow focus project. The city has also submitted a statewide park grant of just under eight million dollars for the Phase One of Sherwood Master Plan. And so hopefully by the end of this month, we'll know if we had received the grant. But if, should we become successful in that grant, staff recommends using this parks and recreation amenities of eight hundred thirty three thousand five hundred towards the construction of pickleball courts. There is another portion of about three hundred and fifty four thousand of recreation impact fees that is cash on hand and available that we could use towards that project. So ARPA would be funding the non-development impact fee portion of the project. That concludes my presentation tonight. Mr. Mayor, I'm happy to answer any questions that you or city council may have.
Thank you very much. Counselor questions, please. Councilwoman Garcia?
Yes, can, Ryan, can you put back the, yes, thank you. So on the recreation amenities, the pickleball courts, where did you say those were? Are those gonna be the new ones or the ones at Centennial?
Those will be the new ones at Sherwood Park.
Okay. And then as far as the mental health services, do we know who we would actually give that money to? Like, is there an organization?
We don't have a specific organization identified.
Okay, all right. That's all I have for now.
Thank you. Councilman Strong?
No additional questions. I'm satisfied. Good progress.
Thank you. Councilman Hammond?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Ryan, with regard to the unfunded major infrastructure projects, the ones that we just wrote down and listed here, I mean, if we change our mind, there's no issue with that. We just, from what you're telling me, we have to enter into a contract and have it done by two thousand and twenty six. Is that correct?
We need to be entered into a contract by the end of two thousand and twenty four.
Right.
They need to actually physically, yes, then are constructed in those two years.
Okay, all right. That's what I'm trying to say. I mean, with the development on the landing out here at the boys' school, we really haven't figured out the development agreement yet on that, and already we're kind of putting some money away, so to speak, to help that effort. And so I'm just wondering, it sounds to me like we should be able to change our minds if that doesn't go the way we want, and I just want to make sure that once we have made this commitment and a resolution that, you know, we haven't really bordered our play, that we can change our mind, and it sounds like we can.
Yes, council can always, yes, council can always change their mind. I guess what staff is looking for in this particular segment is kind of the, the ARPA's will be used to one of these three major programs, have it be Wareware Creek Vine Street Bridge, but we kind of want a handful of these projects identified, and that's kind of what it's intent for, not kind of have it be open to know for some sort of construction project.
Very well. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Gregory?
Yeah, I kind of have the same question, so that answers my question on the unfunded major infrastructure. Then on the housing and homelessness, it states in there that we'd be giving a portion of the funds to a nonprofit, and they may be able to distribute some of those funds for mental health and needs for their helping homeless. Is that correct?
Yes, that is, yes, that is a potential area where the city could forward monies to a nonprofit. Now, the city still is obligated to make sure that those monies are being spent on mental health services, so there's still a due diligence piece on the city side, but that is a possibility.
And Ryan and Mr. Gregory, this is Ty Lewis. I wanted to jump into. I think part of the idea was to also look at augmenting the CAT team. As you know, they're, they have a behavioral services technician that is already embedded in the team, and other communities are experiencing that, expanding that team with additional behavioral health. People that can beat boots on the ground, the riverbed or in the community, has proved invaluable. So some of that money was intentionalized for the CAT team potentially.
So Ty and Ryan, I guess the the amount of the five hundred thousand dollars would be used to help the homeless and the housing needs generally by doing a number of bringing on a health professional, helping a local nonprofit with the homelessness and the housing. So that that number is ethereal by design, so we'll have some flexibility.
Yes, there is. I think generally speaking, we did put in the staff report some range of costs. You know, kind of the public outreach and the workshop piece of that, we're kind of soft budgeting, you know, twenty to fifty thousand for the enhanced mental health services. We're looking about two hundred and fifty thousand dollars there. And then the enhancement to the CAT team in the riverbed cleanup would be about two hundred thousand. And I think that also includes potentially to enforcement for ticketing.
I'd be totally in favor of the person on the CAT team having a mental health orientation.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much. If there are no further questions of staff?
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Hammond?
Yeah, thank you. Ryan, one question again on the recreation amenities. That the funding that is available, how quick could that be spent? In other words, we're moving forward on the pickleball design, and if we want to pull the trigger and get this thing built, it sounds like these funds are available now?
Yeah, correct. We received our first half allocation already, so that was just a little more than two and a half million. And then the, at least on that one particularly, there is recreation impact fees already received and on hand.
Right. That's what I needed. Thank you very much.
Thank you. We will now go to public comment. I do have one person waiting online to comment. Jen Album, welcome.
Hi, thank you so much. Good evening. I just want to make sure, looking at this list that is on the screen, I want to make sure that I'm understanding what the city's priorities are. Eight hundred thousand dollars, well, actually, one point two million for pickleball courts, but only five hundred thousand dollars for a major issue in crisis to the housing and homeless services. Want to make sure I've got that right. So please expand on the why we would do that, why we would even consider spending double the amount on pickleball courts and not seriously address the housing and homelessness. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor Martin, you're muted.
Yes, I'll bring it back to staff now and ask if we can get some comment on the priorities behind the division of sponsor.
Sure. So the recommendation that's represented here tonight was kind of based on two council meetings. The first one at the beginning of July kind of outlined the purposes of ARPA funds. And then the first meeting in August where pickleball, the pickleball discussion was was held. And kind of based on those discussions and the direction, that's how staff interpreted the priorities being. Now, that being said, Mr. Mayor, city council has full authority to add more to a certain bucket than the others because because of the fact that that revenue loss calculation should be one hundred percent of the ARPA funds. So the city council really does have a lot of flexibility on the best use of these funds.
Very good. Thank you. That was the only question from the caller, so we'll bring it around to the council now for comments and discussion. Councilwoman Garcia?
Yes, sir. Thank you. I just wanted to make a comment. As far as the recreation bucket, I just feel that with COVID still out there, I think a lot of our community is always commenting about how they're doing more outdoor activities. And I just feel that the recreation part of it would really help a lot of the families that live in apartments to be able to get out and be able to do more and use more of the of the park. That's all I have, sir, for now.
Thank you. Councilman Strong?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you, staff. I think it's a very good allocation in many, many ways. First of all, I think it's great that we're putting this much money toward the homeless who are United US citizens and have equal rights with everyone, but also have very specialized problems. And also paying attention to the rest of the community, those who are paying the bills, and respecting the pickleball courts and the fact that the pickleball players were so generous in finally agreeing and making accommodations for the tennis players. And we are asking for some money from the state, which could freeze some of this money up for some other reason, but also for the money for the for the roads and bridges. And that's because we have about seventy million dollars estimated cost on the three necessary bridges for public safety. And people's lives are very important. And that seventy million cost, even if we get federal and state aid, far as about a ten percent match on our part, that's seven million dollars that our public would have to come up with. And this is a major portion of that if we can get those those grant funds coming. And we have to have the match, or they won't come, in which case we'd have to put all seventy million on our local taxpayers. And I think this is a very good proposal to, on how to spend the funds, and I'm supporting it. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Hammond?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, I'm in agreement with the proposed plan at this point, not that we can't change it, but you know, with regard to the percentages, basically, you know, the recreational amenities are only fifteen percent of the five point five. The housing and homeless is eleven percent, so it's not that far off. And again, what the American Recovery Act is all about is trying to get some sort of stability with public and getting them back, and recreational, I think, is a big key factor to get people out and back on their feet instead of in their homes. So at this point, I'm good with it. Again, we can always massage it and change it, but as presented, I'm good for it. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Gregory?
Yeah, I too. I'm good with this present presentation. I like the help for the homeless, all the money going into infrastructure. And a little history, the city council approved this improvement on the pickleball courts before COVID hit. And the COVID player, the pickleball players are largely seniors, and it's a recreational need for the community. And we have the potential of getting a grant, and if we do get that grant, those monies can go back into other necessary funding items. And I'm prepared to make a motion when you're ready.
Ready when you are.
Okay, I move that we approve Resolution twenty one XXX appropriating five point five million, like five point five million, five hundred thousand, or four hundred thirteen dollars ARPA funds towards housing and homeless, major unfunded infrastructure capital improvements, and recreational amenities expansion as presented direct to the city manager to implement the program and budget.
Strong seconds. I have a motion by Councilman Gregory, second by Councilman Strong. If there's no further discussion, roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Gregory?
Aye.
Councilmember Strong?
Aye.
Councilmember Garcia?
Aye.
Councilmember Hammond?
Aye.
Mayor Martin?
Aye. Motion passes five zero. Thank you very much. We move on now to item number eighteen, the downtown parklet program. And before we get into this, we have a couple of recusals. Mr. Gregory, would you like to go first?
Sure, I'll be recusing myself from this item. I am disconnecting from the the meeting, and if someone would please contact me when my turn to come back is on. Thank you.
Thank you. And I have been informed by the city attorney that my business relationships with two downtown restaurants create an indirect conflict of interest. I recuse myself in the interest of public transparency and accountability, and will no longer participate in council deliberations on this issue. I'm disconnecting and turning the gavel over to Mayor Pro Tem Hammond. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Then we'll start off with our city manager, Ty Lewis. Can you give us a report on the item, please?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor Pro Tem. So the parklet discussion, as you can recall, goes back to almost, pardon me. The the parklet discussion goes back to June of two thousand and twenty when it was initiated. And you may recall, in March of two thousand and twenty one, the program was extended until November of two thousand and twenty one. And then in May, just a short history, went back to the Downtown Parking Association, or excuse me, the committee to make some specific findings. And in August of two thousand and twenty one, the DPAC returned those findings to council. Regarding a parklet extension, unless the parklets are extended, and this was the conversation we had at our last council meeting, the parklets will be removed no later than November first, two thousand and twenty one. Part of that discussion at the council meeting was that the pandemic continues to strain local businesses and the community. However, parklets are also popular with some and have kind of transformed the community beyond the COVID crisis at the moment, and there are some in the community that desire a permanent solution to the parklet issue. As we know, that they're also controversial within the community. Some view them as lacking regulation and and design standards, and they're not aesthetically pleasing as well, and also there are ADA concerns. So opponents also seek to discontinue the program. There was a few things that council asked us to bring back, and that was some flexible options for potentially extending the parklet program, temporary parklet program, and there's a couple of options, of course, council can take at this point. One is taking no action. If the council takes no action, then the parklets will come down by November first as directed previously by council. You'll reaffirm that decision. Of course, the council has the prerogative extending the date to a date certain sometime in the future based upon their prerogative. Or the option that staff is recommending is that the council delegate authority to the city manager to evaluate and extend the program as necessary based upon state mandates, health concerns in the community or throughout the state, as well as pandemic-related economic concerns. There was three questions that the council asked staff to answer. First was, is it the city's policy to lease taxpayer-funded facilities to the public and businesses moving forward? I think it's important to note that that question is is currently yes. The city does own multiple facilities and properties, and they do have the habit of leasing those to private business entities throughout the city. Some of these examples, one of them being tonight, is airport facilities, warehouse space, office space, and then, of course, we have some commercial property near the train station that has also been leased to private entities. However, in this particular case, there's no precedent or policy to lease public streets or roadways for commercial purposes. So that's something that the council will have to, you know, discuss in further to see if that's something that they would be interested in implementing within our community. The second question is, do parklets negatively impact public parking? As I mentioned earlier, this issue was taken up by the Downtown Parking Advisory Commission in August, and they found that parklets do indeed, as currently implemented, reduce available on-street parking. Currently, there are sixty nine spaces that are being used by the parklets, reducing available on-street parking to the community. The second factor that the DPAC found was that it impacts PRMC twelve point four two oh seven oh, which establishes a target occupancy rate of eighty five percent for all parking zones. And I can tell you that based upon our latest statistics, that those numbers are often above eighty five percent, and on weekends, they're at one hundred percent oftentimes. Lastly, of course, there are impacts, negative impacts to the Lastly, of course, there are impacts, negative impacts to the parking program, which one of council's directives was that that parking program achieve cost neutrality within five years. Pardon me. One of the questions also was that what is a parking space worth? That's one of the things that I think that will need to be answered. Should the city council decide to move into a decision to permanent to make permanent parklets? One of the things that staff evaluated as part of that process is various options for evaluating and valuing these parking spaces. One of those is established within the municipal code and establishes an in-lube parking fee, which is currently at $18,989. If that number were applied to the 69 spaces that were currently taken up by parklets, that equates to approximately $1.3 million. Of course, there are multiple ways to factor and figure in these fees, potential fees. And as we know, that the sales tax is one of those, $1 million annually in sales tax revenue from downtown businesses. If you were to divide that across all of the available parking downtown, which includes some of our permitted parking lots and others, you would generate anywhere from a figure from $15 to $1600 per space. And of course, I'm sure there are other ways that we could look into that as well. One of the other factors regarding temporary parklet programs and decision to extend them is that temporary parklets, of course, were COVID-19, a focus on COVID-19 response in the early stages of this. And they focused on three things: mandates, public health, and the economy. Prior to the extension decisions, or the prior extension decisions, rather, also had a similar focus. Everything was about the pandemic, mandates, health, and the economy. So our future extensions, the question now becomes is, is this focus going to continue to be COVID-19 focused? Or will it change for other various factors, such as some of the ones previously mentioned about the desire to permanitize them based upon some of the response, the positive response from the community? So again, your options in this particular matter are three. One, you can do nothing, which will, of course, bring down those numbers by or those parklets by November 1st. You can set an arbitrary date in the future or delegate authority to the city manager to make a responsible decision regarding the extension, should some of those state mandates, local mandates, health concerns, or the economy based upon COVID concerns take a turn for the worst. Regarding permanent parklet program, again, I think we're moving beyond COVID-19. The question now becomes, is the permentizing of parklets going to move beyond a COVID-19 focus? Or shift more into a quality of life improvement for our community members and our visitors? And also, is it going to become an economic development tool? In your staff report, you're going to notice that there are a bunch of questions and topics that are listed there, which I've kind of labeled as key concerns. One of those being that one of the questions the council will need to answer if they desire to permanitize the parklet program is what's the public purpose? That's one of the requirements when we start looking at amending the municipal code, development codes, and others is, you know, what is the greater purpose? Of course, there are equity issues regarding the establishment of permanent parklets. Are all businesses eligible to establish them? Are they intended just to benefit businesses? Must they, you know, be part of a brick-and-mortar type of structure? Or can a park business solely exist within a parklet? We talked about value a little bit, and I mentioned that $1.3 million. How do we want to value those? Because that will become an important component when the council discusses how we're going to value public space. Of course, we can't give away public space during the temporary program. Of course, we did it for public benefit to keep the economy going, to keep our businesses whole. But this is a much different discussion when we look into permentizing it. Quantity, how many citywide parklets will be authorized? Are they only going to be allowed to be within the downtown quarter? Or are we going to make this something across the city as a whole? And how much space should we give up for parking? I think one of the main concerns is that when we started the downtown parking program, that that was in direct response to unavailable parking. And should we move forward with a permanent program, of course, we're going to be intentionally reducing our parking inventory. The size of the parklets, how many parklets, and how many spaces are we going to allow them to take up per business? What's the proximity to the other businesses? Is there a maximum or minimum number of parking spaces that we want to preserve through this decision or take up as a parklet? We talked about some of the geographic boundary restrictions. Do they benefit all types of businesses? Because not all businesses will be, it will be feasible for them to have a parklet if this decision were to be made. The duration, what's the maximum or minimum amount of time that a parklet would be allowed to exist? And what are the circumstances with which the city could terminate a parklet's occupancy? Of course, there'll be impacts on traffic. One of the big factors is our streets and roadways were traditionally intended to facilitate traffic movement, pedestrians and vehicles, not to house permanent retail structures. So is it the council's intention to repurpose our roads and our streets? Special events, of course, we have many of those. We have rich history, special events throughout our downtown, Pioneer Day and others, and what would be the impacts of parklets on on some of those special events and parades? Of course, there's the, we talk about process, who's going to apply, how do we do it, what review is required, and what mechanisms will be in place to ensure that parklet permittees maintain their spaces and keep them aesthetically appropriate and and looking good, as well as meeting various requirements for ADA. We talked about public versus private space. Will they be available to the general public, or are they intended for exclusive use by private businesses or hybrid fashion? We have some of those issues. Design standards, we have design standards for most every structure in our municipal code and other codes. And so we have to discuss at some point visual appearance. Do we want flexible standards? Do we want them hardline standards? Do we want to encourage unique designs like we have through this temporary process? These are all considerations. We've talked about parking management. How is this going to affect our parking? Of course, we right now, we have free parking for two hours downtown. Parking fees, do they need to be increased in order to make the parking program solvent? Do we need to eliminate the free parking? Of course, we talked about the 85% target occupancy rate. How is that going to be impacted? Time considerations and implementation. So I think one of the big things that council is also going to need to understand is that it's going to take staff some time. We have several projects going on in the city right now, development projects going on, Gateway Annexation. We have the Landing. Of course, we have the Beechwood and the Olson Projects, all of those going concurrently. Staff envisions this, answering all those questions with the city council and the community. We would expect that we couldn't even get this program up and running for at least a year, the fall of 2022. So there, as you can tell, there are a lot of issues that the council is going to have to grapple with and to implement these policies, including extensive public engagement, environmental reviews, administrative concurrence with the various department cities, the city manager, or excuse me, the city manager's office, the city attorney's office, Public Works. All of those are going to be heavily engaged in this process, and of course, all of our advisory bodies, including the city council. So alternatives, if the city council desires to implement this permanent parklet program, and we're directed to do so, you have a couple of alternatives. One is to remove the temporary parklets as scheduled on November 1st and direct staff to establish a permanent program, which I mentioned wouldn't be until late 2022. Or, of course, we could extend the parking program until a permanent program is approved in late 2022 based upon the articulated public purpose. And we mentioned that some of the options there would be that you could choose a date in the future, or we could use the same method of delegating authority to the city manager to implement the program or re-implement it if there was an emergent condition. Based upon that, staff is recommending at this point that you affirm the removal of all temporary parklets by November 1st, 2021, and delegate the city manager discretionary authority to immediately extend the temporary parklet program should pandemic conditions worsen. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you, Mr. Lewis. Questions to start off with Fred Strong. That's right.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem. Actually, I my questions are, I'm going to bring up really more in the comment, because I think this has become way too introverted. We are tying the problem to parking, and that wasn't the problem at all. So I'm prepared to discuss it, but not ask questions at this point. Thank you.
All right. And Councilman Maria Garcia, go ahead.
I don't have any questions at this time. Thank you, sir.
Okay, and for me, I'm going to basically jump in a little bit. Again, Ty, I think, again, you're correct, I think, with regard to the 69 spaces that are currently being used and the 85% occupancy. And I believe it is part of the parking, a lot of the comments I've been getting from the public are that they want their parking back. The only reason, though, I would consider keeping them further than November 1st is if we do trigger COVID restrictions from the state. What do you see as the crystal ball of what's going to happen here with regard to the state restrictions? Are we going to see more impact on our citizens from state restrictions? I mean, we already had a report from Jonathan Sternetta tonight, how things are increasing. I can only see that this could happen. So what what is your thought?
Certainly, that's part of this process. Mr. Hammond is trying to, if I had a crystal ball, I'd tell you it's pretty murky right now. We know that there's recently been some local mandates regarding indoor mask usage. Of course, we know that further complicating it is politics. There's a recall election that's going on. And of course, there's vaccination rates that are increasing. But so are currently, at least, there's a spike in COVID cases, Delta variant. So certainly, it's very unclear where all of this is heading. But I think it's fair to say that the COVID is still, COVID pandemic is still running strong within the community. And, you know, the angst and discomfort that many of our business owners are feeling is still exists, especially as it relates to the economy.
Thank you. I think based on your layout of the item here tonight, again, this is a very, very complex and detailed policy decision if we decide to move forward with a permanent program for parklets. And clearly, with all the pressing engaging items that staff is already working on, I I'm really wondering if you can even get it done by the end of 2022 to make it work. So I guess at this point, again, I'll hold my comments for future here going on. But let's go ahead and then maybe at this point, if there's no further from the council, that we open it up to public. And so Melissa, do you have public engaged yet?
Yes, sir. We have several callers. The first is Christina Averthing.
Christina, if you can.
You're welcome. Go ahead.
Good evening. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Thank you. So I would like to address, I've listened to everything, and I completely understand it, most particularly that the council are burdened with so many other projects. But looking at the parklets, and most importantly, understanding where we are with this COVID, uncertain for sure, but there's no doubt, listening to not just what's reported tonight, but also by the local doctors and hospitals, that the COVID is really here. It's here, and it's huge. With that being said, we do not want to distract our wonderful tourist people that are coming. So they all want to sit outside, and understandably so. Taking away those parklets means that we reduce that so much, and they're going to go somewhere else. I think we've had that discussion before. So it's finding the balance. It's finding the balance of how to keep our wonderful tourist industry alive and vibrant, how to deal with the COVID, how to deal with the parklets. I know that certainly in our restaurant and everyone that I know, we all wear masks as required by by the county. Our guests, of course, they're eating. If they're inside, I would say the majority of our guests voluntarily have their masks inside. Of course, outside is a little bit different, but I think that we need to really objectively look at these parklets. I understand what you're saying, temporary versus, you know, temporary, you know, temporary versus the permanent. But I think that the best solution here is to give the directive to the city manager. We need to extend them, certainly, certainly on a part-time basis, whatever that might happen to be. We don't know the future. There's a new variant coming in. We don't know what that's going to mean. We don't know what the future is going to be. But what we do know is that we do not want to deter our tourist revenue, not just for the restaurant, but for all businesses downtown. With that being said, I think that we, as the restaurateurs and our little restaurant society, as we've told you before, we are prepared to absolutely pay for those parking spaces. We are not asking anything for free. We, of course, already pay our sales tax revenue to the city. We want to keep that vibrant. But I think that that you, city council, you need to look at, we're not taking anything away from the public. We've identified identified public, you know, parking spaces already. We've had this conversation before. So this is not anything new, but I think that you need to take a hard-line look at, this is, this is how it is. I am, as you know, I'm on Pine Street, down at the end of the block, and I have never, with my parklet, ever seen any impact on traffic at all. If anything, it's just more noisy for people sitting out in the parklet than anything else. But with that, I encourage you to please give this directive to the city manager. That is, for at least, do an extended parklet program, and then see what the future holds for us. Thank you.
Thank you, Christina. Next, Melissa.
Next is Carol McDonald.
Welcome, Carol.
Hi, Councilman Hammond, Strong, and Maria. This is Carol McDonald of Il Cortile and La Cuesta Bar and Restaurant. First off, I want to thank you for bringing the parklet discussion back tonight. And as most people know, I'm advocating for a permanent parklet program and have been since March of this year. As most people will recognize, and as the fire chief so eloquently stated in his video last weekend, COVID is real and not going away, and you're going to hear a lot of that tonight. We are at our highest numbers and climbing. Extending the temporary parklets for a month or two will not be sufficient to withstand the virus. There is no crystal ball. Nobody really knows how long we will be living with this, especially with the new variants on the horizon. Once again, I will stress and stress very strongly that many of our customers want outdoor dining to remain because they are not comfortable dining in close quarters inside. I invite you to stand at a host station and listen to the remarks and the requests and the demands for safe dining. As I've stated before, my outdoor dining is not additional seating to our restaurant. This is not extra seating for us at all. They are tables that were taken from the inside and placed outside to get us to our capacity seating. Just because somebody stated on June 15th that we're allowed to be 100% doesn't mean we went to 100%. We don't go to 100% because that's not what our customers want. Without them, without the parklets, we will suffer financially, or without the tables outside, we will suffer financially and probably have to cut shifts from our staff. Our diners, our locals and tourists alike will not be able to get the reservations or to dine as often as they have in the past. Everyone will lose. But beyond that, I would like to stress another point. You've received a lot of emails, a lot of letters, and comments in many of the council meetings previously and tonight in favor of the permanent program. meetings previously and tonight in favor of the permanent program. You have letters from the Paso Robles Wine Alliance in favor of them. Travel Paso has expressed that they are in favor of them. The chamber from the last council meeting had many points that they stressed, if met, they would also be in favor. Many of the retailers have expressed how it helps their businesses, and you have letters stating that. Some of our biggest businesses in Paso, like Justin Winery, Paso Inns, the Piccolo, have all supported them. Even Main Street has said they are not against parklets, and two surveys show overwhelming support in favor. At this point, I think it's clear that a majority of people want the parklets to remain. We know they have to be improved at our cost. We know we have to pay a fee to make it fair. We know our sales tax revenue is substantial for the city. We know we have to work with the city to find drop-off points, work on identifying parking within walking distance, design standards, safety standards. We know that. We are not asking for a handout or special treatment, and we are grateful for all the city has done throughout the pandemic to assist us in keeping our head above water at the worst times and allowing us to make up for the hardest economic times we've all experienced. Please vote for option three, as outlined in your staff report, to develop a permanent parklet program, give the city manager the authority to extend the current programs until we can figure out a permanent program, and together, we will enhance the beauty and charm of our lovely city and keep the vibrance and enthusiasm we have all experienced with outdoor dining. Thank you.
Thank you, Carol. Melissa, next.
Next is Erica Torres.
Erica, welcome.
Thank you. My name's Erica Torres. I am not a restaurant owner in Paso, but I am a frequent diner at many of our amazing downtown restaurants. I see that the recommendation to affirm the removal of all temporary parklets by November 1st and delegate the city manager's discretionary authority to immediately extend the parklet program should pandemic conditions worsen. I would like for the council and Mayor Pro Tem to reflect on what our county health officer, Dr. Penny Bronstein, stated on the August 31st during the most recent San Luis Obispo County COVID-19 briefing. I quote, "Our situation continues to change. So a mere few two weeks ago, I came before you on August 18th and hoped that we could begin to turn the corner. Unfortunately, the surge has continued to accelerate with respect to COVID-19 cases and the aftermath of those cases. So far, in the month of August, we have seen over 3,500 cases, 3,543 to be exact through today." And again, that's a comparison with just over 150 cases in the entire month of June when we thought this was all behind us. Even more concerning than these case numbers are the surge that we are seeing in our healthcare system, particularly our hospitals. We have had sadly 11 more deaths since I last spoke to you and eight more pending fatality death certificates that we believe are due to COVID. Today, we have 67 individuals hospitalized with COVID-19 disease, and of those, 20 are in the intensive care. These numbers supersede anything that we have seen in this pandemic, including our winter surge, total hospitalizations, total number of individuals and intensive care units are at their highest that they have ever been in this COVID-19 pandemic. And unlike January, when we were, unlike in January, we are now fully open, so we have a higher risk of even further transmission," end quote. I would like to request that the council and Mayor Pro Tem listen to our county health public, county health officer, Dr. Bronstein. Public health pandemic conditions have worsened. The time is now to extend the temporary parklet program. Eliminating the parklets at this time and therefore significantly reducing outdoor dining options in Paso Robles will continue to contribute to the rise of COVID-19 cases in our county, thereby increasing stress on an even already stressed healthcare system. I would like to ask the city manager for clarification on how much worse do pandemic conditions need to worsen in order to consider the parklets? What would be the definition of that, given where we currently are? It is completely illogical to ask our restaurant owners to take down the parklets at the end of next month, at the very same time COVID cases are skyrocketing in our county. Conditions have worsened. Please vote to allow for the continuation of the parklet program, especially given the fact that we are currently in the midst of a worsening pandemic. Thank you.
Thank you, Erica. Melissa, next.
Next is Carolyn Dismuque.
Carolyn, welcome.
Thank you. Carolyn Dismuque here. Just wanted to reiterate what's already been said. The parklet program works. Parklets provide such a well-needed outdoor dining in a town that's got stunningly beautiful nighttime weather. During the pandemic, I was really impressed at how a lot of these restaurants shifted their businesses to survive. My job takes me all over the state of California in similar small wine country villages, and what we have here isn't the usual plastic tent. We've got Justin, Gaucho, Odyssey, Streetside, who have really invested in their parklet pavilions. I've been truly impressed. These businesses are in the business of making money, and the city can benefit from that. If you want restaurants to remove their parklets, can you refund them the costs incurred? Given that it's currently uncertain if restaurants will have to shut down or be limited to outdoor dining only again, consider requiring them to adhere to whatever design guidelines you want to recommend, and people can vote on this. But when you consider this, be mindful of all the lots that are within three blocks from the square that are completely empty. I passed three blocks on my three-block walk to the square tonight to dinner, and they were all completely empty. There were plenty of parking spaces two and three blocks away from the square that nobody was using in a town where we say we have a parking problem. We don't have a parking problem. We have a people problem. We need to support our small businesses instead of lazy walkers. You take away parklets, and you take away our customers. Thank you.
Thank you, Carolyn. Next, Melissa.
Next is Lenell Socksman.
I'm sorry, Lenell.
Yes, good evening.
Welcome, Lenell.
Did you hear me?
Yes, ma'am. Go ahead.
Okay. The helpful temporary parklet program has, over the last almost 18 months, allowed some of the downtown restaurants and tasting rooms to benefit, and locals, myself included, have rallied around our local businesses, shopped locally, purchased restaurant family meals, takeout, gift cards, and through this program, restaurants were able to serve diners outdoors and also benefit from stimulus packages for the K-Rails construction, as well as shared costs for propane and the gift card program. However, even with the recent spike, our state is open responsibly for business, and restaurants are seeing a huge increase with all the tourism that's happening. Unfortunately, the shops downtown don't have the option for outdoor shopping, and I'm hearing from a lot of restaurateurs, and the restaurants, tasting rooms, their staff, and patrons represent a very powerful and connected lobby with a vested interest. So all Paso restaurants, businesses, and individuals have been affected by the pandemic, and it's a handful of restaurants, some of whom already have outdoor dining, courtyard and sidewalk dining. I don't believe they should continue to profit at the expense of other businesses. We do have lots of outdoor dining, and Il Cortile and La Cosecha have been sending emails out to their customers and advocating for permanent parklets and talking about all the people like Paso Robles Wine Alliance, Paso Robles Inn, Piccolo, Justin, fellow restaurant owners, and the list keeps growing. So they're asking their customers to share their comments and phone in and outlining how to do it. I think parking is a problem. It's not lazy people. I had to pick up some alterations on a day that was during the week. I had to end up parking by the Cool Hand Luke parking lot and then walking, and there were other people doing the same thing. And I think these 69 public parking spaces should not be used to generate income for just some restaurants. Parking has been a historic issue, a contentious issue. We've spent a lot of money on commissioning studies, and we definitely need parking. So in conclusion, parklets benefit some, but not all. They take up taxpayer-funded public parking. Outdoor dining is already available in many places. The parklets also block signage, awnings. They dwarf the beautiful storefronts that we have and also our lovely restaurant windows. Plus, our colorful Paso Robles mural on 12th is in spring is completely obscured, and design features aren't going to fix that. So I believe we should end temporary parklets November 1st, do not extend them, could have stopped the idea of permanent parklets, and I believe council should not be looking at tourists passing on to the city manager or picking winners and losers. I think the council should make a decision on this and go with their original idea of removing them November 1st. Thank you.
Thank you, Lenell. Melissa?
Next is Sally Reynolds.
Sally?
Yes, I'm here.
Go ahead.
Good evening. Good evening. My name is Sally Reynolds, 193 Via Magnolia. I am here representing myself and the 103 residents of Paso Robles who came to my home and signed a petition to end parklets as of November 1st. These taxpayers are all from Paso Robles. They do not attend city council meetings or even access the city's webpage, but they wanted their voices heard. The issue is important to us. COVID cases are absolutely on the rise. They have been since August 10th, with 124 new cases in one week. Then on August 17th, one week later, new cases were 194. August 24th, August 27th, 130 new cases. August 31st, 166 new cases and five deaths, and today, 173 cases. These are all Paso Robles. Paso has always been the city with the most COVID cases since COVID numbers were first published, and we are also the city with 250 wineries and just as many wine bars and tasting rooms. Parklets are not about COVID because COVID not only affects the restaurants in the downtown area, it's affecting every business and every restaurant in Paso Robles, as well as every person in Paso Robles. Everybody in this city has to navigate the challenges of COVID for their businesses and their families' safety. This is about a handful of restaurants who want to increase their square footage by continuing to use public parking spaces for their own profit. They have been able to use this space for 18 months, and they want to continue to do so. They say their customers like the option of eating outside, and they're not comfortable eating inside. Very few people have used the parklets in the past several weeks due to the hot weather, and empty parklets still take up valuable parking spaces. Restaurants have been serving inside just like they used to do pre-COVID, and their restaurants, and they seem to be doing just fine. It is not the city's job to make restaurants' customers happy. That's called customer satisfaction, and the restaurants own that responsibility. Restaurants are at 100% seating capacity. We need parking restored. Unless or until we have a parking garage, we don't have the parking spaces in this city to give them away to restaurants. Parking downtown is a nightmare due to the 69 spaces taken up for the sole purpose of profit for restaurants.
Sally, can you go ahead and summarize?
I am going to summarize. I have a couple more paragraphs. The city of Paso Robles is supposed to represent all businesses and all taxpayers, not just the restaurants in the downtown square. It is preferential treatment and caters to a handful of restaurants. So I asked our city leaders, how do you justify extending parklets past November 1st? The rest of the businesses and restaurants in Paso Robles, what are you going to do for them? Do you think they are exempt from COVID? What about the taxpayers who are paying for a parking program that will never break even because parking spaces that belong to all taxpayers have been given to a select few for personal profit? The parking program has and is costing taxpayers millions of dollars each year. Does the city not care they will sink this program and all paid by taxpayers will be for nothing? This sounds almost criminal to me. If not criminal, then definitely unethical. I will close with the today's show piece done by Travel Paso, which stated Paso Robles as a must-see destination. It talked about the downtown being so vibrant. Unfortunately, pictures of the downtown were missing. It's too bad they couldn't include pictures of the quaint and charming downtown we used to have showcasing all business equally. Please end the parking program November 1st and vote option one. It's the only one that makes sense, and it's the only one that's fair. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Melissa, do we have others?
Yes, sir. Nikki Clark is next.
Okay, Nikki, welcome.
Hi, thank you. My name is Nikki Clark. I wanted to chime in tonight in my support of the extending the temporary parklets with a push for permanency. I'm an employee downtown in one of those restaurants, and I've been an employee downtown Paso Robles, right in the heart of the park for six and a half years. The parking pre-COVID was not easy, but it was manageable. It's been the same. And I say that, I know that there's 69 spaces that are being used by the parklets, but I mean, I work a lot of hours down there, and I have been there all through the pandemic when we did TCOs and the closed downs and the reopenings. And I am telling you, the consensus of all of the people we talked to downtown at other restaurants, other employees, and the patrons, the feedback is the same. They want a choice. This has been a very scary last 18 months, and COVID is very real. And regardless of anybody's point of view on the statistics one way or another, it's terrifying. And this beautiful quaint must-see town is a must-see town, and it must remain safe. And our patrons have a right to public safety to choose if they want to be indoor, outdoor, or at a table a little farther away. They should also have that option outdoor to have it completely accessible for them regardless of their higher table, lower table, wheelchair accessible needs. So permanency, I would love to see, but I would love to see the temporary extended so that they never go away. And I did, you know, I'm not a business owner. I am your hourly waitress that lives on tips, which supports her family. And, you know, it was very, very lightly touched on tonight about all of the layoffs that would have to happen if we reduce and get rid of the parklets. It's much more than 123 people that want 69 parking places. We're talking about a much greater number of people that would be let go, and you look at our unemployment rate of most people pay taxes. With all that money made, they pay taxes. It's not just to me about business owners making a little more money. I work for a place that treats me like family and always has. It's about wanting to take care of their staff, who takes care of their families, who supports locals, who loves this town and bleeds for Paso Robles, loves it. And that vibrant community, it's built because of that foundation and that love and that holistic view that makes this place so infectious and makes it a must-see place. The parklets enhance that. We haven't had a parking issue. It is walkable, it is doable within a couple of blocks to walk to downtown if you've ever gone to major cities and visited, which everyone has. If you've ever gone to major cities and visited, which everyone has, you walk a few blocks, even if there's a parking structure. You, I walk farther when there's a parking structure in major cities. And I do it every single day, and it's not a parking issue. I love this place. I would like to see them stay. And I think that public safety should be one of our number one options for locals, travelers, for the sake of our community. And I, I heard it spoken about earlier. I thought there was just some really lovely thought-out pieces. Earlier, when the council people spoke of, you know, the monetary value of these parking places. I, I listened to that, and I really tried to think about that and do a little math. And I, I think it would be a great option to offer that. You know, if you want your parklet, this is how much it would be to the business owners. They're not making a decision just for their pocketbooks. They're making it for the whole staff who supports families who are all local and are all taxpaying, and that is a much greater number than certain, certain people who have genuine concerns about wanting 69 spaces back. We're talking about families and unemployment. Thank you guys for your time. And that's my two cents.
Very good. Thank you, Nikki. Melissa?
Next is Kimberly Sherwin.
Kimberly, welcome.
Hi, welcome. Thank you for having my call. I am actually a local business owner in downtown, and I have a retail business. So the parking, the parklets actually negatively affect my business. That's how I feel, at least. One of the questions that I just want to put out there, I just mostly have questions that if you're going to consider continuing them, that you would think, that you would just think about these kinds of questions. How many hours should a restaurant have to be open to justify a parking spot being taken up from 8 to 5? When most of the businesses that I heard speak earlier, their businesses don't even open until 5:00 PM, but yet that parking is taken away for the entire day. Another thing is that during the winter, which we're trying to take these away in November, when winter's right on the horizon, when I experienced, even during the midst of last year's pandemic, most of those parklets set empty during the winter. So that's another thing to keep in mind. On Pine Street, there's about 11 or 10 parking spots on one side of the street, and there's either seven or eight of those parking spots are under parklets of one of a restaurant that is hardly open. And even when it is open, there's no one in their parklet. So that's another thing that's a little hard to understand when I have customers. So even though I do service customers a little bit different, I service a lot of elderly customers, and they are not always able to walk. They have walkers, they have kings, they have all kinds of ailments that keep them from being able to walk many blocks to get to my business. Another issue that I have with these parklets is they're very dirty. And if these people, so they take away from the look of the downtown. And I feel there's no, absolutely no reason that these businesses cannot clean them. I mean, that's just, that's just gross. And then I hope that maybe this would, I mean, if there was some type of talk about how we can improve our parking downtown, then I wouldn't be opposed to a little give and take both ways. But until we have more types of parking for consumers, I think that it is, takes away from our downtown, and that's all I have to say.
Kimberly? Melissa?
Next is Joel Peterson.
Thank you.
Hello. Hi, councilmembers Hammond, Strong, and Garcia. Thank you so much for working on this, on this plan. This has been a tough night with lots of opinions on both sides of the coin here. We know that you have to work hard to, to make good decisions for the entire community, and we thank you for your service. When you did, when you made the decision, you know, 18 months ago, situation called for unique and swift solutions to keep our businesses, you know, afloat, and the decision to install temporary parklets really helped, and they were really, really incredibly helpful. So thank you. As we look at options tonight and beyond for the next iteration of parklets in Paso Robles, we're excited about the prospect of what this can become. We know that many people, locals and visitors alike, love our downtown. It's charming. It's our belief that done correctly, permanent parklets in a downtown would be smart and forward-thinking. We think the city needs to develop a comprehensive parklet plan that addresses the key issues of safety and permits and aesthetic and uniformity, among other things. We know that, they all don't look great now, but we know that with planning and hard work, and with this great staff we have and the great community we have together, we can probably put something together that's really charming. And the plan can include drop-off points and handicap spaces and other parking plans like the previous caller referred to. So I think ultimately, parklets could enhance our charming downtown, allowing people to experience the ambiance of, of our special Paso Robles. Additionally, we know that during the pandemic, we've needed to continue our restaurateurs. If they've been hard hit with these different plans, it's helped certainly keeping people safe and wanting to stay outside. And with guidelines on social distancing and best practices of being outside, these were certainly a lifeline. So in conclusion, if you respectfully request that the city adopt Option 3 to develop a comprehensive plan for these parklets, we believe that as a decision, it is, when executed correctly, will positively affect the downtown core of our special city and keeping our business community healthy and strong for years to come. I apologize for not introducing myself. This is Joel Peterson, the Executive Director of the Paso Robles Wine Country Alliance. So thanks for listening. Have a good night.
Thank you, Joel. Melissa?
Next is Stacy Jacob.
Okay, Stacy, welcome.
Hi, good evening, Councilmember Strong, Garcia, and Councilmember Hammond. Thank you for bringing back the discussion of parklets to support our local restaurants. The restaurant community, as you know, has been among the hardest-hit industry sectors locally and nationwide during the COVID-19 pandemic. Restaurants, while the most vulnerable in our tourism ecosystem, are critically important to our tourism economy. Throughout the first half of 2021, visitors spent 30.4% on restaurants and dining, the largest share of wallet next to retail at 16.9%, and hotels and lodging at 13.5%. To put that in perspective, when visitors bring a dollar to Paso Robles, 30 cents of that is spent towards restaurants. So 60%, is between restaurants, retail, and hotels and lodging. Your ability to pivot and support the restaurant community has kept Paso Robles economically strong during these very uncertain times. As you evaluate options this evening, we strongly encourage you to choose Option 3 as outlined in your staff report. This option gives the most flexibility to the new city manager to make necessary economic decisions based on the status of the pandemic and explore the development of a permanent parklet program with all the ideas discussed tonight. Aesthetics, compensation for parking taken out of place, looking at what that, how that we support that totality of the ecosystem. Throughout the COVID-19 pandemic, Travel Paso, along with our partners, the Paso Robles Wine Country Alliance, the Chamber, Main Street, City of Paso Robles, we've created and implemented some unique programs. Dining in the Park, supported the current temporary parklet program that is currently in place, the Winter Propane Program. We created a video with core messaging about how Paso Robles is safe and strong and planned a robust reopening campaign to coincide with the June 15th opening date for California. So with the severity of the current healthcare crisis that is currently at an all-time high, it's evident that we have a long road ahead to ensure the safety of our employees, community, and tourists. Your decision to support Option 3 provides flexibility, encourages your staff to collaborate with downtown businesses, and provides options for the long-range economic health of our community. Thank you.
Thank you, Stacy. Melissa?
Next is Gina Fitzpatrick.
Thank you. Gina, welcome.
Good evening, Mayor Protem Hammond and Councilmember Garcia and Strong. You guys can hear me okay?
Yes, we can.
Fantastic. So tonight, I'm speaking on behalf of the Paso Robles Chamber of Commerce Board of Directors, and I'd like to share two recommendations for your consideration this evening. The first recommendation is to extend the current temporary downtown parklet program to February 1st, 2022. The very fluid and constantly changing COVID-19 situation has created uncertainty and confusion for our restaurants. By you, our council, making a decision tonight to extend the temporary program, you will help remove this uncertainty and provide our restaurants, the very heart of our economic ecosystem, some assurances for moving forward with providing desired dining services for their patrons. This recommendation does, does come with suggested caveats that include the city establishing cleanliness criteria to address concerns regarding trash and sidewalk and street stains. We also recommend the city establish condition criteria to address the safety and overall appearance of the various apparatus and structures currently being used for parklets. We encourage city inspections and owner compliance with these criteria by November 1st. The second recommendation is for the city to consider a permanent outdoor seating program as part of a much broader and more comprehensive enhancement plan for the downtown. We encourage the city to reconstitute and expand stakeholder engagement of the Downtown Refurbishment Task Force that was originally established in 2016. The Chamber would like to extend an offer to work in partnership with the city to retain the services of a facilitator, to convene this group and our community to address, analyze, and answer many of the questions that you're being asked this evening. Reconstituting the Downtown Refurbishment Program provides an opportunity for the city to explore broader perspectives and considerations of potential programs that contribute to the aesthetics of our downtown, which includes permanent parklets. We appreciate the complexity of the item before you this evening. However, we'd ask that you consider engaging with stakeholders before you make a decision on permanent parklets. Thank you for your consideration of these two recommendations. I'm happy to answer any questions you may have for the Chamber.
Thank you, Gina.
Thank you.
And the next caller is Robert Sacks.
Robert, you're welcome. Go ahead.
Good evening, councilmembers. Thank you for the opportunity to address you. I am a physician assistant in cardiac surgery at Keck Medical Center of USC in Los Angeles. Paso Robles is my escape. I come there frequently and dine in the restaurants downtown, particularly El Cortelli. And I encourage you to extend the temporary parklet program, and I would like to see it extended until late 2022. My reasons behind that are the restaurants need to know what the future holds for them, not going month to month. And certainly, Dr. Knox addressed tonight that we really don't know where COVID is going. And from where I work, I can definitely state that. And I would encourage you to continue the parklet program. It's wonderful. I have experienced times coming up to Paso when the restaurant suddenly closed while we were there and had to put up with the disappointment of not being to dine in Paso and also being stuck with a very expensive hotel room. So as a frequent visitor to Paso Robles with my wife's and our name in the sidewalk downtown, a couple of places, please extend the temporary parklet program. Thank you for your time, and I'm sorry your meeting took so long tonight.
Thank you, Robert, for coming to Paso Robles. Melissa, do we have any further?
No, sir. That was the last caller.
Very well. Okay, we'll bring it back then to council for further questions of staff. We'll start off with Councilman Strong. Further questions or comments, Mr. Mayor Protem?
Well, let's go ahead, do one other thing I just remembered. There was only one question that I really heard out of the 12 people testimony was the trigger on that, Ty Lewis, with regard to city managers' trigger to extend. What is your thought on that?
I think I'm unmuted now, sorry about that. I think this is probably one of the more difficult questions to answer. Certainly, I outlined in the staff report some thoughts regarding what should be considered. Of course, the, going back to the reason for the temporary parklet program to begin with was to address some of the federal, state, or local mandates that were placing restrictions on various businesses. Of course, some of those were health orders. Some of those came from various divisions such as ABC, alcohol beverage control, and others. Of course, then we moved from mandates and orders to recommendations, which we've seen a lot of those. Increasing recommendations could be another factor. And then, of course, all of that could be predicated on any type of health or economic trends and practices that are going on with maybe our neighbors within the region and so forth. And of course, you know, the catch-all would be any emergent and specific articulable circumstances that maybe we haven't identified. I think that that's probably one of the biggest things we've learned about COVID is that things change sometimes daily and new things emerge that we didn't know yesterday. So taking all of those into consideration, realizing that, you know, the authorization to keep the parklets open was to keep our community vibrant, to keep businesses open, and to be responsive to their immediate emergent needs. So all of those, in addition, it could be something more specific that council would like to see, that we could factor into these decisions as well. Ultimately, any decision that would be made would be brought right back to council for further correction or direction.
Very good. All right, bring it back then to Councilman Strong and Councilman Garcia. Any further questions before we get into comment?
No comment only.
Okay, Maria?
No, no, no questions.
All right, Fred, go ahead with your comment.
Yeah, well, first of all, you know, the COVID numbers sound really, really terrible, truly have affected less than 2% of our population, if you really look at the figures. Secondly, the stress is on outdoor dining, not parklets. So third, the, the problem really is the restrictions on indoor dining. That's the source of all of this. And outdoor dining can be accomplished, as we have in the past, with dining in the park. But also, you could accomplish it with rooftop dining, balcony dining, sidewalk dining. There are a lot of possibilities. In Sacramento, they turned their downtown into a mall. And that was a disaster, actually, and they finally abandoned that except for one street that was divided by, by tracks. But that's Sacramento. This is Paso Robles. So remember that almost every rental that I know, I don't know of any restaurants that aren't in a rental, haven't rented their original space. So the owners have to be involved in this decision. I'm very much in favor of, of Item 3 modified. And I would like to see Option 3, if you look at it on your, on your agenda, where we distract staff to develop, eliminate the word "A," keep the word "permanent," eliminate parklet program, and insert "outdoor dining alternatives." And there are many possible outdoor dining alternatives that I think we have to look at. I think we've gotten too introverted, and all we've done is tied this to the parking spaces. There are many possibilities for outdoor dining that don't involve taking away parking permit, parking spaces. There are some that do include taking away parking spaces. But that can even be solved if we went to one-way streets, we went to angled parking, we can, we can get back to full parking spaces as they were before by changing the angles on our parking a little bit. There are a lot of potential solutions that I think this staff report is inadequate in addressing. I would like to, and when I'm ready, I'd like to make that motion that we take Option 3 as I propose to amend it. And that's basically my statement, so go from there.
Okay, thank you, Fred. Maria, comments?
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Hammond. You know, it was a pretty intense, I liked the report that our city manager gave us. It just kind of clarifies and puts in perspective all the hard work that we're, we would have to do if we're even going to consider the, the permanent parklet, parking, parklet program. But you know, with, also with the reports that we just heard from Fire Chief and Dr. Knox, I mean, we have to consider that, you know, COVID isn't, hasn't gone anywhere yet. And so it's, it's a tough decision, and, and, you know, we have, we've heard both sides tonight. And I, I feel that Option 3 is also something that we can consider for right now to give the city manager authority as things move forward with the pandemic. the city manager authority as things move forward with the pandemic. And we'll see what things go from there and then start planning long-term with design and safety and public safety and parking and everything that comes with that. That's all I have for right now, Mr. Hammond.
Thank you, Maria. Okay, I'll make my comment again. I'm kind of going back a year now plus where we actually made the decision to support our restaurants and do what it takes to keep their doors open. I've said many times, they fail, we fail. And we did what it took to get them to continue and essentially keep the doors open and not fail. I think we've accomplished that. I am personally not going to support any permanent parklets until this city designs or plans or approves some sort of additional parking structure or parking areas. I cannot see personally taking away downtown parking, which was so critical a few years ago. We made the hard decision to do time parking because of the issue with parking, that we now are taking away parking spaces to give to, on a permanent basis, restaurants. The equity question is huge in my mind. We've had testimony tonight from Sherwin there on Park Street with regard, Pine Street, with regard to number of spaces being removed in front of their business for parklets for restaurants. I think it's a huge issue that we have to, I think, think of the whole downtown group of businesses that are using our parking spaces there. And to allow, at this point in time, to be permanently turned into parklets for restaurant-only, or as Ty was mentioning, who gets them and how do they get them and how long they get them? There's a lot of deep, deep design questions here if we're going to get into this. So personally, again, I can't support it. But on the other flip side of it, I'll come back again, like I said, from 16, 18 months ago, when we made that decision to go ahead and keep them open because of restrictions given upon us from the state or county. If that, again, becomes an issue, I'm open to extending beyond November 1st. This is, I think, important that we continue our relationship, what we originally planned to have for our restaurants to survive. And, you know, and to that point, I think, again, I'm open for that discussion. But in option three, essentially, if we start talking about that we're going to be directing staff, which we've heard testimony from staff, that it will take them over a year probably to get a permanent designed parking plan that, or parking structure, excuse me, parklet structure that we can adopt and therefore make available. I think I'll also throw out, too, that we already have a sidewalk program, albeit, you know, there's only so much sidewalk. We do have outdoor dining programs already available to these restaurants. I think, again, it was twofold. The reason we used the parklets was to get spacing and also because we were restricted for indoors. Those two items have now been released, or at least to the point where we still have indoor. So it's not as critical to the restaurants to have these kind of opportunity. But be it that we have the structures already in place, we've already said that we'll keep them till November 1st, I am personally thinking that if we see this, the crisis become more of an issue, that we as a council, and I think along with the direction of the city manager, could extend further. Not going to say what month or day or whatever, but I think I'm leaving that open based on, you know, pandemic concerns. And that's the only reason I think we need to consider this is through pandemic issues, not on a permanent basis, just to extend the downtown. Again, if we do this permanent parklet, it will definitely change the downtown completely. And without additional parking structures or some way to get more parking closer to the downtown park area, I don't really want to even think about it. I just don't, I don't believe it's right to do that. We've had a lot of public testimony saying they want to see their parking still remain in the downtown. But until we have additional spaces, again, I'm kind of off limits on it. So I'll open it back up. One more go around for Fred and Maria.
Mr. Mayor, I'm Mr. Mayor Protem. I would really like to offer that motion, and I'll tell you why. Almost every restaurant, I don't know of any restaurant who isn't renting their space from a landlord. And if we're going to have them have additional space for something, whether it's on the sidewalk, in the street, on the rooftop, on a balcony, however they want to do it, I think they should have to deal with their landlord. And if we want to develop a program to sell part of this property or lease that part of the property to the landlord, if he extends the sidewalk out as sidewalk space, if we make the streets one-way, if we go to more angled parking to keep the parking, there's a lot of different possibilities that we have not even begun to explore. And I think those need to be explored if we're going to really address the problem and not restrict it just to parklets. Parklets are only one possible solution. So my motion is to affirm the removal of temporary parklets by November 1st, 2021, direct staff to develop permanent outdoor dining alternatives, and delegate the city manager discretionary authority to immediately extend the temporary parklet program should pandemic conditions worsen based on established criteria and articulated public purpose. Thank you, Mr. Mayor Protem. That's my motion.
Thank you, Fred. Maria, do you have a second for that?
Yes, I do have a second for that.
Okay, then for discussion, your motion, basically, Fred, says to extend immediately the temporary parking program. Is that really what you want to do?
No, no, I did not say that.
Yeah, well, that's.
To affirm the removal of temporary parklets by November 1st, but give the city manager the authority to extend them if the, if there are worsen, if there's conditions that worsen.
For the pandemic.
Right, yeah. I'm good with that. Again, Ty question, if we give you this direction, it basically sounds like, you know, with all the questions that you were talking about of how we're going to design this kind of a parklet program, and you were talking about timing, would that be an opportunity for, to basically engage an ad hoc to work, in other words, with you and staff with regard to different downtown and citizen people who might want to sit on this as far as a project?
Mr. Hammond, I think that this is going to be, you know, even bigger than that most likely because, remember, we're talking about a program that could have impact citywide, not just on downtown. So when we talk about alternative, you know, dining, outdoor dining alternatives, as Mr. Strong put it, I think we're going to be considering some pretty broad topics without direction, you know. So I think your answer, the answer to your question is yes. I think that an ad hoc would be appropriate. The second part of this is trying to figure out when we could even begin to, in earnest, to put some time into it based upon current projects that are underway.
Mr. Protem, I was wondering if we could also ask maybe the chamber and those organizations to help out with that downtown?
Well, that's what I was getting at, basically, you know, is to have some input before it goes too far down the road that there might be some changes.
John, I think, pardon me, Mr. Mayor Protem, I think those are decisions for the administrative staff and our city manager, that we can include those people. I'm trying to make this just an open thing to allow him some discretion as to how he moves forward with this and to also give us the discretion to look at a variety of alternatives.
Okay, all right. I do have a question for Elizabeth, being is that we are now a three-person council. How is the voting on this particular item, how is it going to go down?
Sure. So it's just direction to staff, so it only requires two out of the three of you. If it was an ordinance, it would require a unanimous vote.
I see. All right. Yeah, again, I personally, I like the fact that we're going to give the direction to Ty to pull that trigger when he thinks it's necessary, but yet that we are affirming that November 1st is the end of that parklet situation. I do not like the fact that we're talking about a permanent parklet design or program until or before we have other parking available. I mean, I guess it would be all right to work on it and get it set basically on the shelf for whenever we do, for instance, get a parking structure that's bonded and we're moving forward to make that happen. We already have this parklet program on the shelf. I think that would work. But given, again, what staff has on their plates already and what was outlined to us on all the other projects, I'm just wondering priority-wise if it's really something we should direct staff to do at this point in time.
Mr. Mayor Protem, that's not my motion. My motion isn't to just look at parklets. That's why we would have an ad hoc, and that's why we would engage the chamber and others to look at other possible alternatives for outdoor dining, not just parklets. And that way, we wouldn't have to necessarily have a parking structure if we found alternatives that didn't include the parklets, or if we better define how people could use parts of the sidewalk and still keep enough space for pedestrians to use it also.
Did I miss?
There's a lot of possibilities there.
Did I mishear you saying that, again, you were reading from the item, it said, direct staff to develop a permanent parking program?
No, no, I said to eliminate the words parklet program and instead insert outdoor dining alternatives.
And Maria, a second? Then I'll just call for the question then. Staff, go ahead and call, roll call.
Councilmember Strong?
Aye.
Councilmember Garcia?
Aye.
Councilmember Hammond?
No. So major passes, two out of the three, that's direction to staff. Ty, do you have what you need?
I believe so, Mr. Hammond. Thank you.
Okay, then let's get Councilman Gregory and Mayor back online. I don't know, I don't see him here, so we have to call him up, Melissa.
I am working on inviting them back in.
Okay. Yep. I believe while we're waiting, Ty, we're going to be bringing back item 10, so we might get that ready to go from consent agenda.
Yes, sir, Mr. Hammond.
And Mr. Mayor Protem, we might want to inform the mayor that he has an ad hoc to appoint, which I would volunteer for.
Yeah, let's give him an update on that when he gets back online.
I believe Councilmember Gregory is back online. I'm still trying to get the mayor into the meeting.
Councilman Gregory, are you here?
I am here. Steve Gregory here.
Steve Martin, very good. Mayor Martin, we concluded with item 18. The vote was to approve an ad hoc and work with the staff to become, Fred, you could probably fill in a little bit, but you're looking to have a ad hoc formed to work with staff with regard to the program with regard to outdoor dining, and we might want.
Yes, and it's actually to look at outdoor dining alternatives, not just parklets, and to appoint an ad hoc committee to work with staff and also to consider, have the staff consider, or city manager consider, including the chamber and others in that program. So we're not just looking at parklets, but looking at outdoor dining alternatives.
Okay, so I'll ask the city attorney if there's going to be an ad hoc on this appointed. I probably shouldn't be involved in that action either.
That's correct. I actually think it would be appropriate for the mayor Protem to handle that action.
Should I sign off while they do that, or can I sit here and listen?
I didn't think the intent was to do it this evening, but maybe I was wrong. I thought there was going to be some thought put into who might participate in that.
Well, Elizabeth, can I go ahead and make that direction to staff that two of the councilmen will go ahead and serve when needed?
Yes.
All right, so Fred, you want to go ahead and serve? Maria, do you have any?
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Yes, sir, I can serve as well.
All right, so there's your ad hoc. Councilman Strong, Councilman Garcia will be your ad hoc, Ty, for working in the future on this item. Okay, we are finished with that item then?
Yes, I think we're going back on over to item 10.
Right. So thank you very much for taking care of business there. I apologize I wasn't able to be a part of it, but that is the appropriate thing to do, and we are all about doing the appropriate thing. We return now to our agenda. We have one item that was pulled from the consent calendar, item number 10, approval of award of contract to prepare bid documents for road repairs of the Country Club Neighborhood Saw. Staff report, please.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, City Council, this is Christopher Luckler, in our Public Works Director. On February 4th, 2020, City Council adopted a six-year pavement maintenance plan that included road repairs for the Country Club Neighborhood. These repairs were scheduled to commence FY 2324. On July 8th, Country Club residents and members of the Country Club's Architectural Association presented their case to City Council as to why this neighborhood in particular warranted an accelerated schedule for repairs. The high level of pedestrian traffic, lack of sidewalks, and heavily deteriorated streets were cited as a significant safety concern for both pedestrians and motorists. At that meeting, Council directed staff to initiate preparation of bid documents to repair these roads. The item before you tonight is a result of that direction. That is, we're asking Council to award a contract to Pavement Engineering, Inc., to prepare construction bid documents such that the city will be positioned to commence construction in summer of 2020, 2022, one year earlier than initially planned. And with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Questions of staff, please. Councilwoman Garcia?
No questions, sir.
Thank you. Mr. Strong? Fred, you're muted. Will come back, Mr. Hammond?
I'm sorry, I had trouble.
I'm sorry, Fred. Okay, go ahead.
No, I have no questions.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Hammond.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, Christopher, I had a question with regard to the cost of $119,565 for the general fund reserved to be appropriated to hire these people to do, I guess, exactly what? I'm trying to figure out, you know, I thought we had a PCI pavement index already on the Country Club streets, so we know what needs to be done. I'm kind of comparing this particular cost to the West Side engineering firm that we did that has quite a lot more work to do for half the cost. I was just, it struck me, it seemed like it was a lot of money for something I thought we already had ready to go.
Yeah, the West Side streets, I believe, are, yes, six segments of, you know, of relatively minor repair. This is to develop plans and specifications for the reconstruction of that neighborhood. Requires much more consulting and engineering work to get that done.
It's all the streets.
Yeah, and it's all the streets in the Country Club.
Right, I understand that, but, I mean, they're all in the same condition. Do we not have a PCI index on these particular streets already?
Yeah, so the PCI is, first of all, it's dated, and it just provides relative condition of the streets. It's not a, they're not construction documents. They're not plans and specifications.
So this particular $120,000 roughly is going to get them ready to go so we can get out to bid and get a number?
That's right. Full plans and specs that we can advertise for contractor bids.
All right, okay. That's the reason why I pulled it, Mr.
All right, okay. That's the reason why I pulled it, Mr. Mayor. I just thought it was it's very um seemed like it was out of line with regard to another particular quote we had just on item before that. And I just thought, struck me, it was like a lot of money, um, but
Councilman Hammond, if you look at the cost of design relative to the estimated construction cost, um, it's in line with what we typically expect. This is estimated to be over a three million dollar construction job. So full plans and specs are definitely warranted here.
Okay. All right, that's all I have. Thank you, Christopher. Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you. Mr. Gregory?
Uh, just to piggyback on that, um, the infrastructure and the subsurface of the roads of the Country Club are in much worse condition than the West Side roads are. And I think this is a a way for us to spend money diligently so we could redo it at an affordable rate and not have to put a lot of extra money into it. So I think it's a just like what you're doing out on Tower Road or out on Dry Creek. John, I think this is a good way to spend the money to build something we can afford to, so.
Yeah, they're they're certainly not designed properly for the city standards anyway, so I know we're going to be taking a bigger bite on this one for sure. Thank you. Okay, if there's no further questions, I'll open it for public comment. I see no one standing in line to comment from the public. We'll close public comment, bring it back to the council.
I move we uh approve item number ten.
Second. Motion by Councilman Gregory, second by Councilwoman Garcia. If there's no further discussion, roll call book, please.
Councilmember Gregory?
Aye.
Councilmember Garcia?
Aye.
Councilmember Hammond?
Aye.
Councilmember Strong?
Aye.
Mayor Martin?
Aye. Motion passes five zero. Thank you very much. Excuse me, we come now to item number nineteen, current council committee activities reports. We'll start off with Councilwoman Garcia.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Um, Mayor. Um, on September eighteenth, I attended a public engagement workshop for the Recreation Services. Um, it was uh pretty interesting. We got together and um there were some public um people from the public there and people from the rec uh department, and we discussed uh what we would like um to see different in the recreational um department. So it was pretty uh uplifting and and a lot of uh engagement in that. I have also been uh meeting with the NWACP. They uh contacted me, uh, I think they received some grant money uh for um COVID awareness, for vaccination awareness. And so I'm working with them. Um, they asked me to help them on how to get the word out in um to the Hispanic community. They're going to try to do some marketing and get the word out about uh vaccination, where they can go, how important it is, and um and those uh type of things. And um, let's see, what else here? Think that's all I have, sir.
Very good, thank you. Councilman Strong?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. And uh, yes, we had a meeting of both uh Slocog and and the Regional Transit Authority uh on uh Wednesday of last week. And we have approved a lot of different things. The one thing that that didn't get resolved is the question of of changing a a bus stop having to do with the homeless shelter and the restaurants down there. And basically, the uh executive director said the the problem is that the people hanging around there aren't aren't people who are riding the bus. They're just homeless who are hanging around there, and so it has nothing to do with the bus stop. And it would be extremely expensive to change that bus stop and maybe encourage even more activity than than the restaurants or the hotels would like to have, so. That was about it for locally, except that uh our other projects are all under consideration and will be brought back uh next month for possible funding. Meanwhile, I also have talked to my staff at the state level. They are setting up appointments for me with Caltrans in Sacramento as well as for the Cal- California Transportation Commission staff and uh leadership. And I will be there uh trying to get us money for our various bridges at forty-six East, forty-six West, and where we're at Creek. And hopefully, we will have some success. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Councilman Hammond? Oh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, nothing last two weeks there. Uh, tomorrow, we do have the IWMA and Greater Waste Management that's going to be meeting again um without a director at this point, but uh we're meeting at one thirty to see how we're moving forward with the SB thirteen eighty-three. So um next meeting, I'll be able to report out a little further on that one, so. It's all I had. Thank you. Thank you, sir, and Councilman Gregory.
Yes, um, at a busy schedule, I had my first meeting with the new city manager. It was pretty grueling, but I made it through. Um, the uh, we had a really nice meeting with the supplemental sales tax oversight committee. It was very long and very detailed oriented, and I want to thank Ryan again for making great presentations so everybody on the committee has a good understanding of what Deedus and the our staff do on a regular basis on uh we keeping our roads in the condition we have. And then it's very educational. I had a lot of nice compliments from all of the attendees at that meeting. I attended a LAFCO meeting. Um, uh, our la- we do have a LAFCO item coming up in the next couple of months for uh the uh for Lottie Project or I can't remember what you're calling that now, but we'll be talking more about that in the future. And then I attended the um had the pleasure and the honor to be there at the Fire Station Three groundbreaking with uh Mayor Martin and Chief Darnetta and our city manager, Ty Lewis, and many, many of our staff. And again, uh, as I said at that meeting, I just want to thank the community of Paso Robles for their support in passing J twenty to do the very thing we asked we do to improve the safety of our city with a new fire station and helping out our police department and helping fix our roads. It's another step towards a promise well kept here, so I just want to thank the staff and the community. And uh, we're on our way for Fire Station Number Three. That's all for me. Thank you.
Thank you. For myself, I attended the school liaison meeting we have every month, representatives from the city and the school district and Quest College. I was interviewed by Pacific Coast Business Times regarding our application for spaceport status for our airport. That's uh really generating some interest. I've met several times with our economic development director and others uh with companies both uh in person and virtually who have heard about our application, are interested in what direction that is taking. Uh, we will continue doing that this week, and I do believe that we are uh building some good excitement for this potential project, looking forward to the success of our application process. I attended the Cal Cities Legislative Briefing Meeting. Uh, we talked about SB nine earlier this evening. Uh, plans are put to encourage cities even more than usual to get involved in uh lobbying their state representatives so that uh cities can have a greater hand in steering state uh steering state legislation that affects uh our municipalities. Uh, as uh Mr. Gregory said, I attended the Fire Station Number Three groundbreaking. I was uh at the H-SOC Housing Committee online today. I did had to leave. I had to leave that meeting slightly early, so I wasn't there for the full meeting. And then uh this afternoon, I was on our local radio station sound doc program. Our upcoming events include a special city council meeting for Brown Act training. That'll be Wednesday, September eighth, six P M. Library board meeting Thursday, September ninth, nine A M. Senior Citizen Advisory Commission meeting Thursday, September ninth, one thirty P M. Development Review Committee meeting Monday, September the thirteenth, three thirty P M. Parks and Recreation Advisory Committee meeting Monday, September thirteenth, four P M. Planning Commission meeting Tuesday, September fourteenth, at six thirty P M. Development Review Committee meeting on Monday, September the twentieth, at uh three thirty P M. And the next city council regular meeting will be Tuesday, October fifth, six thirty P M. Deadline for submitting items for the regular meeting on Tuesday, October the fifth, is Wednesday, September the twenty-second. And if there is no further business for the council tonight, I would entertain a motion to adjourn. So movement? I have a motion by Councilman Strong, second by Councilwoman Garcia. All those in paper signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed. We are adjourned. Thank you all for your very hard work. Have a pleasant